The Denver Planning Board reviews and makes recommendations to the mayor and Denver City Council on rezoning request, district design standards, and other land use rules. This meeting of the Denver Planning Board begins now.
Welcome everyone to the Denver Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. We are called to order and we'll start with a roll call. Angel.
Here.
Fred.
Here.
Gosha.
Here.
Heidi.
Here.
Ignacio.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
I'm Joel, I'm here as well. We have seven members present. We have a quorum. We reserve time at the beginning of every planning board meeting for public comment on anything not otherwise on the agenda. We haven't had anyone sign up to speak, but if you have come to tell us something that is not a matter otherwise on the agenda, if you could use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Would you have one person joining by phone? Andrew, could you remind me what they would need to hit if they wanted to raise their hand now or later? It's a star something.
That would be star six.
Star six. Alright, so if you've come to speak to planning board about something not otherwise on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you're on the phone, star six. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. We have two meeting records for approval. And the first one is from May 4th. May 4th was unusual because we had exactly four members, five members present, which is the minimum that we need to approve a meeting record. However, one of the members present then is not present now. So we would only have four people voting if we follow our tradition of only those who were there testifying that the meeting record is correct and complete. Question for Andrew. We had present at that meeting Joel, Fred, Jordan, Mary Beth, and Angel. Not having off the top of my head, who's continuing on, we believe that in July, when we meet again, all those members will still be on the planning board, right?
Yes, that is my expectation.
Okay, so we will defer that until we have those five members present. We also have meeting record to consider for May 18th. Presence at that meeting, myself, Heidi, Ignacio, Jordan, Gosha, Mary Beth, and Angel. So of those present then, would someone like to make a motion to approve that meeting record?
I'm moved to approve the meeting. Go ahead, Heidi.
Hey Gosha, I moved to approve the meeting record for May 18th, it's written.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Heidi and seconded by Gosha. Any discussion on that meeting record? Alright, I'll do a roll call just in the order that was at the top of that meeting record. I vote aye. Heidi?
Aye.
Ignacio?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gosha?
Aye.
And Angel?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting record is approved unanimously. Thank you. We're on to our regular agenda. We have two rezonings, or as they're formally called, map amendments on the agenda today. The first is official map amendment application 2020I-00141. A rezoning at 1001 and 1003 South Pearl Street from USUB to PUDG number 29. This is an official public hearing of the Denver Planning Board. The public hearing is open. Our staff report will be from Libby Kaiser, then we'll have any applicant presentation. And then those from the public who come to testify will have three minutes each. We'll start with the staff report from Libby Kaiser.
Sounds good. Thanks Joel. Alright, y'all can hear me and see my presentation?
Looks good, sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. So, good afternoon all. As mentioned, I am Libby Kaiser of CPD. And we are looking at a rezoning request for 1001 and 1003 South Pearl Street. The property is in Council District 7, represented by Council member Jolene Clark. And it is in the Washington Park West neighborhood. The subject property is located southwest of South Pearl Street in East Tennessee Avenue near Interstate 25. And the Louisiana Pearl Light Rail Station is within one half mile of the property. The lot contains over 9,000 square feet and includes a former church with a residential unit on the second floor and a surface parking lot. The property is currently in the USUB Zone District and the applicant is proposing to rezone to a PUD or planned unit development, which would allow for reuse of the existing building. The existing zoning is within the urban neighborhood context and allows single unit houses with a minimum zone lot area of 4,500 square feet. Surrounding zoning includes single unit and rowhouse residential zone districts, as well as Main Street districts that allow a mix of uses. In the immediate vicinity, the area's land use is predominantly single unit and two unit dwellings with some commercial, some commercial uses located on or near intersections. As shown in the bottom left photo, the subject property includes a church and parking lot, while properties to the north contain two-story homes. Properties to the east also contain single unit homes, while properties on the southern end of the block include space for small scale shops and services. The request to rezone to a general planned unit development district or PUDG 29 would expand the uses allowed in the former church. If the church were demolished, development on the property would have to comply with all the standards of the existing USUB district, which allows residential and some civic uses only in the urban house building form. The PUD would allow all uses permitted in the USUB district, including an existing dwelling unit on the second floor of the church building. And it would also add a subset of uses in the arts, recreation, and entertainment services indoor category, including an art gallery, artist studio, fitness and recreational sports center, personal instruction studio, and a professional studio. General office and dental medical offices would also be allowed. This limited range of commercial uses is more restrictive than a standard mixed use or Main Street district in the urban neighborhood context. To facilitate reuse, the PUD acknowledges the current conditions of the subject property and includes custom standards for the existing building, as well as vehicular parking and landscaping. Throughout the rezoning process, application notifications have been provided according to code requirements. And the LUDY meeting is scheduled for June 21st. To date, staff has received two letters and one presentation from nearby homeowners opposed to the rezoning as they question the need for new commercial uses to be allowed in the former church building. Staff has also received 10 support letters advocating for reuse of the former church by the limited commercial uses proposed. As described in the applicant's narrative, they conducted extensive public outreach with the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association, beginning in May of 2020. The applicant also met with adjacent neighbors on several occasions to discuss a potential PUD and the types of uses that might be allowed in the former church building. Moving on to the Denver zoning code review criteria, it must be found that the requested map amendment is consistent with five criteria. In regard to criteria one, there are three adopted plans that apply to the requested rezoning, including the Cop Plan 2040, Blueprint Denver, and the West Washington Park Neighborhood Plan. As stated in the staff report, the rezoning is consistent with several goals in the comprehensive plan. A few of those goals relate to improving access to healthcare and the arts and supporting the reuse of existing buildings and neighborhood serving businesses. The rezoning request is also consistent with Blueprint Denver. The subject property is mapped as part of the urban neighborhood context, which is described as containing small, multi-unit residential and low intensity mixed use buildings embedded in single unit and two unit residential areas with good walkability. The rezoning request is also consistent with the future place type defined by Blueprint Denver. As the subject property is designated as residential low, which is typically characterized by single unit uses with buildings up to two and a half stories. However, the residential low place type also states that vacant institutional uses, such as churches, may be appropriate for additional development intensity. As for the future street type defined in Blueprint, both South Pearl Street and East Tennessee Avenue are categorized as local or undesigned streets, which can vary in their land uses and are found in all neighborhood contexts. With regard to the city's growth strategy, Blueprint Denver directs growth to key centers, corridors, and high-density residential areas that align with transportation options, while limited growth is desired in all other areas of the city, specifically 10% of jobs and 20% of housing by 2040. The proposed map amendment is consistent with this growth area, as it will facilitate a few new employment opportunities in proximity to the interstate and light rail. Furthermore, the proposed rezoning helps implement two Blueprint Denver policies related to land use and build form. First, the plan encourages compatible redevelopment of institutional sites within neighborhoods. And it says that until a citywide approach is implemented, individual rezonings are appropriate. Secondly, the plan seeks to preserve structures that contribute to an area's established character, even if such structures are not historic landmarks. Blueprint Denver also recommends against using custom zoning tools like PUDs, except when unique or extraordinary circumstances exist. While a standard mixed use or Main Street Zone District, such as UMX 2X or UMS 2X, would also facilitate reuse of the former church, the full range of uses allowed in those districts could result in a higher intensity use than would be appropriate on a local street adjacent to single unit and two unit residences. In addition, rezoning to the UMX 2X or UMS 2X districts would allow for the redevelopment of the site within the general or shopfront building forms, which could be less compatible with the surrounding residential character. Whereas the PUD either allows for reuse of the existing building or redevelopment within the urban house building form. Moving on to the West Washington Park Neighborhood Plan, this plan was approved in 1991 and is significantly out of sync with the current Denver zoning code, which was updated in 2010. While the plan's recommendations don't clearly address the subject property, the plan does say that churches and other public facilities are integrated well into the neighborhood's residential fabric, and that all historic and architecturally significant structures should be maintained. Built in 1960, the former church on the subject property could be considered historic, although it isn't a designated landmark. Staff has determined the proposed PUD is consistent with the intent of the neighborhood plan. The rezoning is also consistent with criteria two, three, and five, as stated in the staff report. In regard to criteria four, changing conditions in the city and a city adopted plan are the most applicable justifying circumstances for this rezoning. In this case, the rezoning is justified as the changing conditions affecting this particular area and the city generally reflect a national trend of declining congregations and closing churches. Blueprint Denver further justifies the rezoning with its policies related to the reuse of vacant institutional uses and the preservation of buildings that contribute to neighborhood character. Besides the previous review criteria that apply to all map amendments, PUD rezonings must also comply with five additional criteria, which I'll go through. The first PUD criteria requires rezonings meet the intent and purpose of PUD districts. And PUDG 29 meets this criteria because the subject site containing a former church presents a unique opportunity to reuse a longstanding, non-residential building embedded in a residential neighborhood. The PUD represents a thoughtful expansion of allowable uses that are more sensitive and less impactful than rezoning to a standard mixed use or Main Street Zone District, which would allow a much broader range of uses, such as eating and drinking establishment, food sales, and outdoor retail sales that would likely operate for longer hours, contribute more noise, and generate more traffic than the uses proposed in the PUD. In addition, as mentioned, PUDG 29 is limited to reuse of the existing building or redevelopment within the urban house building form applicable to the existing USUB Zone District. In contrast, rezoning to a mixed use or Main Street District within the urban neighborhood context would allow for the general or shopfront building forms. The first PUD criteria also requires rezonings be consistent with the applicable neighborhood context. And to this end, PUDG 29 is consistent with the urban neighborhood context and character and is not a vehicle to enhance proposed developments' economic feasibility. The PUD also provides several public benefits, including the diversification of land uses, more efficient use of land and energy, and development patterns compatible in character and design with nearby areas and the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The PUD also complies with all standards and criteria stated in Division 9.6. As the PUD district is necessary because there is no standard zone district available that is specifically intended to allow reuse of this particular vacant institutional site in a manner that is most compatible with surrounding residential uses. Finally, PUDs are intended to be compatible with existing buildings. As the PUD is intended to facilitate reuse of the existing structure on the zone lot, the PUD doesn't prescribe a building form, but rather defines key building forms related to the existing building, including a two-story maximum height, surface parking allowed between the building and the primary inside streets, and minimum street level transparency on the primary inside streets that matches current conditions. The existing building established in 1960 is already compatible with adjacent residential buildings that vary in height from one to two stories. While the location of surface parking between the building and the primary street would not be allowed in a building form associated with a mixed use or Main Street District as defined today, and the existing street level transparency on the primary street is less than the general and shopfront building forms, the PUD necessarily defaults to existing conditions to ensure feasible reuse without costly modifications. The PUD also allows exemptions from current landscaping standards around existing surface parking that if required, could significantly reduce the vehicular parking spaces provided onsite. Most importantly, the standards embodied in the PUD acknowledge the time and place that the existing building was established, appreciates its longstanding history and compatibility in the immediate area, and seek to enable its longevity while avoiding significant reconstruction. Based on finding that all review criteria have been met, CPD recommends approval of the rezoning application. And the applicant's representative, Peter Wall, would also like to speak for a few minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite up Peter Wall. As the applicant, you'll have six minutes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time this afternoon. As Libby mentioned, my name is Peter Wall, and my address for the record is 142 South Jackson Street in Denver, here on behalf of the property owner Leon Farfel, who owns 1001 and 1003 South Pearl Street. We'll try to make my comments as brief as possible. Think Libby did a great job of summarizing the rezoning request before you today. Before I get started, I'd love to take the opportunity to just thank a few individuals throughout this process. First, would like to thank Corey Keaton Pope, Sarah McCarthy, and Gertie Grant for all their time engaging with us on behalf of the neighborhood for the last two-plus years and helping to shape the PUD that's before you today. Would also like to take a moment to thank CPD staff. I know they spent a significant amount of time reviewing this. And Libby in particular, for her thoughtful staff report and all of her work and lots and back and forth with me on this application. I want to take a moment and touch upon really three core principles for us that embody this rezoning request, and the first of which is preservation. You know, obviously, our city, you know, has and will continue to see and experience lots of significant growth. And when I started working with Leon, we set out working on this rezoning. Really, the main goal was to come up with a creative way to incentivize adaptive reuse of this unique building that's been in the neighborhood for over 60 years. And certainly Leon could have, as the property owner, sold to another residential developer who could have built one very large or two single-family homes. And that scenario is happening all over Wash Park and frankly, all over Denver. But, you know, in speaking with Leon, it was really his goal to save this piece of history in the neighborhood, reactivate it with uses that could benefit the area. The second principle is maintaining character and community engagement. And shortly after Leon purchased the property back in 19, Leon reached out to the West Wash Park Neighborhood Association to introduce himself and start a dialogue on how to use this property, and then asked for my assistance to continue those discussions with adjacent neighbors and the RNO. And, you know, as Libby mentioned, we could have, you know, simply pursued maybe a typical Main Street Zone District, which is found in the area, but he wanted to be a good neighbor. And we thought, you know, creating a PUD with a highly negotiated use list that would provide predictability to those near the property would be, would be an important goal. And this goal led to to our community engagement efforts. And I say the word engagement very deliberately, and especially versus the word outreach. Because instead of telling neighbors, you know, here are our plans, here's what we're going to do. You know, we really thoughtfully engaged with them and came up with a very narrowed down use list that would promote adaptive reuse, you know, limit impacts such as traffic and parking, and maintain character, as Libby noted, by incentivizing the preservation of the existing church building. And finally, you know, our third principle was thoughtful urban planning and environmental stewardship. I think one of the big hallmarks of Denver's most vibrant neighborhoods and many of the greatest cities out there is walkability. And Denver's adopted plans, most recently, the adopted ones, you know, call out the importance of promoting complete neighborhoods that are residential in nature, but provide residents with walkable amenities that meet their needs while removing our reliance on cars. And we believe this PUD maintains that neighborhood character and actually seeks to minimize impacts versus a previous or future church use while promoting a more walkable neighborhood with, with neighborhood-serving commercial uses. I think finally, by preserving the existing building, we're seeking to minimize our carbon emissions that a new building would generate. And yes, while this is just one site and one rezoning, I do think it's important for each of us to play our part and that each rezoning or development consider these environmental implications, given where we're at, and utilize the smart urban planning principles to address the environmental goals identified in our adopted plans. Certainly available for questions, but wanted to thank staff, again, the community, and the planning board for your consideration today. I know you folks spend a great deal of time as volunteers reviewing and thoughtfully considering these proposals multiple times a month. And just know that we appreciate your time and consideration and would respectfully request your support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have nine people signed up to speak today on this topic. Each will have three minutes. If I can ask you to start with your name and address for the record. I will call out the first three speakers, so you know what order you're coming in. And then before we're done with the first three, I'll call out the next three. Our first three will be Greg Holm, Linnea Hanson, and Joe Goodman. I'll just give a moment for staff to allow each of you to unmute. See, Greg Holm, you should be ready to go.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am a resident of the West Washington Park Neighborhood. I live at 1325 South Downing. And I support this rezoning request because adding small commercial spaces to the neighborhood is crucial for West Wash Park to become a more walkable neighborhood. And for me, that definition of walkable means that residents are able to walk to meet the majority of their daily needs, including ideally to their place of employment. By granting this rezoning request, the city will allow the developer to create several small office spaces where a doctor, a dentist, therapist, insurance agent, et cetera, can operate businesses that allow residents to access services by walking or biking. In addition, these businesses will provide employment opportunities which could potentially be filled by West Wash Park residents. This type of commercial is an amenity that will make West Wash Park a better place to live for all its residents. It's also a great adaptive reuse of an existing building. As, as other people have stated, over the last two years, the applicant has provided information to and responded to input from adjacent neighbors. During that time, the applicant has listened to the community and has come up with a narrow list of low-intensity commercial uses to add on top of the existing USUB zoning. As stated above, I'm a proponent of walkable neighborhoods, and I strongly believe the uses proposed for the project will benefit the West Wash Park community and will increase the vibrancy of the area. As, as also been stated, it's consistent with Blueprint Denver and the city in the city's comprehensive plan. And so I'm asking that the planning board approve this rezoning request. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, Linnea Hanson.
Hello. Oh, wrong account. I am not Silverstone Fine Cannabis. Linnea Hanson. I reside in the West Wash Park Neighborhood at 1275 South Corona Street and am a neighbor of this proposed rezoning, and I'm asking for you to support it. I don't want to be overly repetitive. I think Ms. Kaiser's staff report was amazing and very well done. Congratulations and thank you. I do want to hit on a couple of things about how this developer dealt with the neighbors and how much time and effort they put into, to really hearing, especially from the people who live even more close in than I do, in order to make sure that this project worked. Adaptive reuse is so important, as we see so many buildings around us being torn down and started over again. Mr. Wall was correct. The environmental impact of that is significant. But also, building a neighborhood in which we all can live and walk and enjoy and be able to see a dentist or our doctor close in is really important to why I moved into West Wash Park. So I want to, I want to thank you and ask you for your support of this adaptive reuse, which meets all of the guidelines that Ms. Kaiser went through. I also appreciate her pointing out how old our neighborhood plan is. I'm sure there's a few others on this call who are working on getting that updated. But thank you, and please support this rezoning.
Thank you very much. Next will be Joe Goodman, followed by Sarah Urin, Kane Kuns, and Catherine Fontaine. My apologies for all the names I'm due to mispronounce. I look forward to hearing how to pronounce them correctly. Joe Goodman.
Thank you, Joel. My name is Joe Goodman, and my wife and our family own and reside at the property at 1000 South Pennsylvania Street, directly across the alley to the west of the property. I've previously voiced my opposition in a letter dated March 22nd. But we have owned and resided at this property over 16 years. None of the residents that live in the immediately surrounding area are in favor of this rezoning. In fact, everyone I've personally spoken to categorically believes that allowing for additional commercial uses of this specific property will in no way enhance or improve the neighborhood or community. And there are a few inconsistencies to the staff report that I would like to point out today. I wasn't given a copy of the updated report, but the one that was dated May 25th is the one I'd like to point out these inconsistencies. Number one, the staff report states that the former church no longer functions as a congregation, and Ms. Kaiser mentioned it was even vacant. That is not accurate. There is a Pentecostal congregation that holds regular Sunday services at the location and also meets multiple other times throughout the week. It is unclear as to why the seller and Mr. Wall are trying to characterize the building as a former church, while there is still an active congregation gathering and worshiping there on a regular basis. Number two, the staff report characterizes one letter and one presentation as a minimal amount of opposition from nearby homeowners. I assure you, this is not the case. Despite the described extensive public outreach and public engagement, I was not even really made aware of the full scope of the application until I was introduced to Mr. Wall in March of this year. Even up to a day ago, many of the immediate surrounding neighbors have told me they were not informed, not provided a full understanding. Not provided a full understanding of the application, the intent of the rezoning or the process. Um to my knowledge, there were two primary neighbors consulted. One that is not in favor of the rezoning and the other one sold their property and moved out of the neighborhood. Uh number three, the report also states the staff has received three support letters advocating. And I would just like it noted for the record that those support letters were from an investment banker, a commercial realtor. And a broker associate. So it's unclear what specific interest they have, but you can make your own conclusions. Uh with all due respect, we um urge the council to uh turn down and deny the application. Uh thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Urin.
Hi, my name is Sarah. Um um. You were pretty okay on the pronunciations, but it's uh it's you ran like ran down the street, you ran down the streets. Um so I similarly related to to Joe, I live right next door. I just purchased the property at one thousand four South Pennsylvania, directly behind. Um the discussed property. So I've been trying to get up to speed on everything and I apologize for not being as well versed as some of the other people. However, it's. In my personal opinion, this is absolutely. It's absolute insanity and I'm very, very frustrated by it. It's easy for people who live up at the park or. You know, five or six blocks away to say this is a great idea. Well, it's a great idea if it's not interfering with your garage, your dogs, your kids, your partner, your. Friends coming over, anything of that nature. It's very easy to vouch for it. Um I'd also like to point out the level of vacancy of storefronts on South Pearl Street currently um and how that. Isn't enough retail space for everybody who's advocating for this um to go through. There's plenty of retail space. I'd also like to point out another thing is there's retail space on Mississippi. And now that they have re-rented the building on the far corner of Bucktown in Mississippi. For a construction company, the trucks in that area are the employees of that um company. They are now parking illegally, covering the sidewalk. Which is really inconvenient, walking with two dogs and trying to swerve into Bucktown without getting hit by a car. Um so I'd like to say that the responsibility and the irresponsibility of people who who use retail space. Is really, really dangerous to the neighborhood. Um I would argue that we see that with even Orange Theory down the street. And for me, it is just absolutely unnecessary to have more commercial space. When we could just use that as residential and I would like to back Joe up. Every Sunday, there there is service going on. It is not a former church. It is one hundred percent. Operating and um and I'm just, you know, I'm a- as a new homeowner to this location, I've lived in West Wash Park for quite a while. Um but honestly, like thi- this is completely and totally unnecessary and I think all the rationales are absolutely ridiculous, but. I really don't want to be told by people who don't live directly behind it or directly across from it or directly next to it. That this is a good idea. And that's a, that's all I wanted to say with my time.
Thank you very much. Next Kane Kuns.
And you should be able to unmute. Sorry about that. Uh this is Kane Kuns. I live directly on the other side of the park on Tennessee. Uh a block away from the South Gaylord Strip, so obviously in what the, what, what a commercial vibrant. You know, go- the goal that they're trying to achieve. I've seen that be realized. And it seems like that's. You know, it's it's something that you you can't just have a few commercial places in there. Um and there are vacancies on South Gaylord all the time and it's still a really thriving sort of place. And if it reverts to a single, single family use sort of thing, the only thing that's going to happen is that it's going to be congested with a bunch of construction crews. Who try to, well, first they're gonna have to scrape it and suck out even more of the character from the city I grew up in. Um so just can we keep some of the existing structures? I mean, it's, I mean, there's on a block on either side of this subject. Is a raging dive bar notorious for being like pretty rowdy. So it's, you know, why shouldn't a dentist be able to operate in between them? Um it seems. Yeah, I mean, it it seems. Like there might be some more local. Objection and if tho- if more of those people are on this call, I guess that should be considered. But it doesn't seem like too many people wrote demonstrating support, so I also urge everyone to consider. Uh secondhand accounts as being hearsay. Um because it's, I don't think anyone wants to hear. Well, everyone that I've talked to, everyone believes me, everyone agrees with me. Um we all have the the right to be here and to raise our concern. So I'd just suggest everybody um just speak only for themselves and I'll yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Uh next, we have Catherine Fontaine, followed by William Steck, Ben Berman and Corey Pope. If I haven't called your name, uh we didn't have you signed up to speak on this item, but if you'd like to, you can use the raise hand feature and we'll add you to the queue. Catherine Fontaine.
Um quickly, is it possible to share my screen?
We're not doing that for participants right now, but um. Uh hopefully, that's not a hardship. You could describe what you'd like us to to know.
Okay, I will do my best. I only have three minutes, so I'd love to thank everyone. I don't have time. Um my name is Catherine Fontaine. I live at ten twenty-five South Pearl Street. Uh my husband and I have owned and resided at this property for twenty-three years and raised our children here. Uh to add some context, uh we've lived here through the planning and construction of the light rail system, they changed the bolt plane ordinance. Uh all the scrape offs for duplexes before uh there was rezoning. Um and the development of flat homes. Um. And just an overview of this block, the one thousand block of South Pearl is unique because. It is at the very edge of West Wash Park Residential Neighborhood. It's adjacent to and shares the block with substantial commercial development um within one block. Or two short east-west blocks. Um. There is a Whole Foods grocery store, a liquor store, a coffee shop, two bars, four gyms, two barber shops, two hair salons, a nail salon, a chiropractor, a day spa. Spa and auto mechanic, multiple office spaces, a marijuana dispensary, a dentist and industrial space. And multiple vacant spaces, um at least one of which has been vacant for nearly the entire twenty-three years that we have lived here. Uh so uh the message there is we have enough commercial, we do not want more on this block. Um I'd also like to note that um everyone keeps talking about this building like it's some precious thing that was built in the sixties. It was extensively remodeled in the two thousands um with the second floor residence that was built. Over the community space. I wish you could see this picture of what I see from my backyard where this ugly side of the building looms over. Uh my backyard. Um so my main point here too is uh what is desperately needed here is not commercial space. It is single. Family housing. Um the home across the street just sold for two million dollars to give you some perspective. Um my other point I'd like to make is um there needs to be an off-ramp. Um developer has proposed to allow only a handful of uses. If this is approved, um and what if it, what if this experiment fails? Um the property owner is unable to find a tenant. Are we stuck with this vacant property in perpetuity? Um are we going to be bombarded with rezoning applications every year or two requesting slightly more objectionable uses every single time? Um so I would say that um if it's, if there should be a condition, if it's vacant for more than, say, eighteen months. Um it should be, it should be demolished. It's a failure. Um and the developer should have to submit a financial su- uh surety or some form of commitment or bond. To make sure that it is demolished, that it can be re-zoned, I mean, redeveloped as a family use. Um got through in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. William Steck.
Sorry, could you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Uh William Stack for the record, uh my address is two seven two South Ogden Street. Um I want to be super respectful of everybody's time, uh and opinions here. I fully support uh the rezoning. Um I find that. Adding walkability, adding uh these multi-use uh commercial units to these neighborhoods add. Add a certain character and value to have uh walkable amenities uh within reach of your home. I understand everyone's concern and trepidation, but I think uh keeping the current structural value of a historic building renovated recently or not. Uh is really important as we move in a direction in building in Denver that is mainly. You know, prefab townhomes that all look the same, uh which I believe actually detracts from the overall. Uh curb appeal, if you will, of the neighborhood. And so repurposing a space that is currently maybe in use one day out of the week, I wouldn't. Call that fully in use uh would be a really big benefit to the neighborhood and to its residents in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ben Berman.
Hi, hey, my name is Ben Berman and I live at ten twenty-seven South Pearl. And I wasn't really planning on talking, but I did sign up for the ability to, so I just would like to. Um say that I oppose the the change in zoning. Um I know that. Like. I live on the same block and we do have plenty of commercial, including vacant units. Uh it doesn't seem like we need more commercial in this area. I think sticking with the residential zoning would be good. Um and there's really no parking on Pearl Street. Uh I know that this particular. Church has a parking lot, but people, especially on Sundays when they do have their church services, park all up and down the block. Um and then also, it seems like the people chiming in for it. Don't live anywhere near here and I highly doubt they're going to be walking over here across Alameda and down the way, but. I mean, I'm not sure of that, but it's probably likely that they would go to a closer dentist on the other side of Alameda. And uh that's all that I have to say. I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh the last person we have signed up to speak is Corey Pope. So again, if you've come to speak and I haven't called your name, please use the raise hand feature and we'll add you to the list. Corey Pope.
Hi, thank you. This is Corey Pope. I am the neighbor who Peter mentioned earlier, who. Lives immediately north of the church across the street. That was my house that you saw in the picture that Libby presented on the slide with the Little Free Library in the front yard. I have given hours of my life to this process with Peter and Leon and. All the other parties involved over the last two and a half years. I have been involved in these conversations since before Peter was even involved in this process, working directly with the owner, Leon. I want to reiterate a couple of things that people said earlier on the call. Um. I agree that there's already an awful lot of commercial space, including on this very block, some of it which I would consider to be blight. There are vacant buildings with busted out windows on the very south end of the exact same block that we're talking about. My personal opinion is that we don't need more empty commercial space in this neighborhood or on this block. I would also reiterate something a previous spokesperson said about this not being a historic building. This is not a beautiful historic. Building that that everybody feels passionate about saving, not at all. In fact, I'd argue that it's not even a beautiful building. That said, we quite like having a church across the street. There are definitely services in that church. There are people who visit that church for community events and our family has lived here for fifteen years. And we like living across the street from a church. I've worked closely with Peter and team over the past two and a half years to get the rezoning and the P U D to a place where I can live with it. When Leon first bought this property, he approached the immediate neighbors and he was fully intent on completely rezoning it. With the maximum possible uses. The neighbors pushed back hard. That's when Peter was brought into the process and that's when I became more involved in working with Peter and Libby. And Joel Long Clark and all of the involved people over the past two and a half years. To narrow the use cli- use cases of the property and get it to a place where we can live with it. But I still don't really understand why we need more commercial space in this neighborhood. I know that Leon bought this pa- this space in a ten thirty-one exchange several years ago. I think he probably made a bad real estate investment and now needs to rezone it to make a profit on his investment. I've gotten it to a place where I can live with it, but I don't understand why we need to rezone this property at all.
Okay, thank you very much. We've reached the end of our speakers list. I don't see any additional hands up. So we'll turn now to questions from the board to staff, the applicant or anyone who's spoken. And to be clear, these questions are of the planning board's way of of probing on topics that help us answer the main question that we have, which is, does it meet? Uh the rezoning criteria that Libby presented earlier. Fred.
Hi, thank you. Uh thanks to everybody who's spoken today. Take the time to comment. Uh and thank you to staff for the report. Uh Libby, I had a couple of quick questions for you. I've got three questions if I could do those quickly. Uh first question is that I wonder if you can speak a little bit. In an awful lot of ways, the P U D that's being presented looks a lot like a traditional chapter fifty-nine P U D. In its specificity to with regards to use. It includes a site plan that's pretty restrictive, et cetera. And obviously, our our zoning code in our two thousand and ten zoning code, one of the. I think pretty clearly stated objectives is that was to do away with this kind of. Very specific customized and very restrictive customized zoning. I I wonder if you can speak to that and speak to. The conversations that you guys had about about bringing one like this forward.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Fred. Um. Honestly, staff would have liked to have seen this be rezoned to a U M S two X or U M X two X zone district. Either of those mixed-use districts would have been supported by plan guidance for this area. But have you, as you've heard tonight, there's a lot of concern with adding commercial uses to this particular location. And so as Corey in particular emphasized, um neighbors in the immediate area as well as the larger. Washington Park West Neighborhood have been working with the applicant for two years to kind of whittle down. The the list of uses that could be allowed here that would facilitate reuse of this building. In a minimal impactful way.
Hey, I I appreciate that. Thank you. Um one clarifying question I want to ask and then I'll ask my final question. Um one of the commenters, a few of the commenters have have spoken about there being an abundance of of retail use. I want to clarify, as as I understood it, this P U D doesn't allow retail uses. As we classify them in the zoning code. Is that correct?
Correct. There's no retail establishments or restaurants or any of your more intensive commercial uses. It's really. A limited subset within the arts and recreation categories, allowing like art studios or fitness studios. And then dental or medical offices.
Great, thank you. And then finally, um I want to. I want to delve a little bit into some of the plan guidance because there there's a question in here that's been raised by commenters and. And th- there does appear to be a little bit of a conflict to me here. When we look at your staff report, page thirteen, uh where we discuss future places and the residential low future place type. And to quote it, it does say that limited mixed use can occur along arterial and collector streets. As where as com- as well as where commercial uses have been already established. Vacant institutional uses on corners or select sites may be appropriate locations to introduce additional residential intensity. And then if we go down to thirteen, or sorry, down to page fifteen. Where you talk about some of the uh plan guidance regarding uh redevelopment of institutional sites within neighborhoods. And you mentioned strategy C under policy six. That states that individual rezonings of these sites may be an opportunity for more intense residential uses. Or limited neighborhood services to be provided if done in a way that minimizes impacts to surrounding character, which. I think is it's pretty clear that's kind of the intent of this P U D from certainly from what you just said as well. But these two do appear to conflict a bit in that the future places guidance. Would seem to indicate that. What's appropriate here, uh particularly given that it's not on a collector or arterial. Would be additional residential intensity. So I I'm just wondering if you can help to um. Reconcile those two different pieces of plan guidance which appear a little bit to me to conflict.
I appreciate that and internally, I think staff has certainly had a lot of conversations as well about how to read into. The language in Blueprint, which is very specific and can kind of conflict with itself a little bit. Um as well as some of the folks pointing out that this church may not be completely vacant and maybe it's still being minimally used for congregations. So we haven't exactly gotten around to like how to define those or. Um how to clarify those, but I think it is very clear based on the language that where there's a non-residential use that's existing. Like a church um that may not be able to function um as the institution that it has been. Previously, that that is a site where we could expand its use into the future by reusing an existing building and. Either adding additional residential units to it or minimally impactful neighborhood-serving businesses. So I appreciate that it's a little confusing and you know, folks can kind of pick at it how they want, but I think that when you look at the language. So I appreciate that it's a little confusing and you know, folks can kind of pick at it how they want, but I think that when you look at the language on a whole, the intent does meet the purpose of this beauty.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you. I've got Jordan and Jill and then Ignacio.
Yes, sir. So thanks, Libby. I think this is just a little bit repetitive, just just to make sure I understand that. If the site was not to be resoned to anything P U D or one of the other mixed use from Main Street zones, the, as I said, the option for the property is to continue operating as some sort of institutionally use a church or or something comparable perhaps. And that's kind of it, right? Or they tear it down and they can build the couple of of single family detached houses. Is there another option there that I'm missing if it were to not be rezoned?
No, you've got it. It's either leaving it under the existing US U B that would only allow a limited range of residential and civic uses within the existing building or within two new like urban houses. Or it's rezoning to a mixed use district to facilitate kind of the full use or the full range of uses within that church or, yeah, tearing it down.
So what was, you you'd mentioned residential uses as a, in it, in the current building form. My, my understanding was that there is a residential unit there and that can be preserved. Is there ability to expand residential in the existing building under the current zone?
No, within the current zone, I believe we could only have like a single unit residential. So you couldn't do like a multi unit.
Right, okay. Thanks. That's my question.
Thank you, Angel.
Yes, thank you all for the presentation. Um, so I heard a couple of the community or the residents and community folks talking about the, the existing usage for church, a church. I don't know if it was the original church or most recent church or if it's being leased out. You know, in terms of a visiting church for space, but with this rezoning to this P U D, would it allow for use of a church presence in the building along with other uses?
It would still allow for a church use, which is currently allowed within the existing US U B zoning.
Okay, and so the church that's currently in there would not necessarily be displaced. You would just add to the uses in the building. Is that correct?
That could be an option, but I don't know what the, the applicant's intent is down the road.
Okay.
Thank you. We have Ignacio, Heidi, and then myself.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, Libby. The, under the P U D, what percentage of the building is going to be non residential? This is a about four thousand square foot building on, on the footprint. So what is all of it? Is the residential part of the building, the current residential part will remain residential? What is what is intended use for the building there?
I would actually like to ask the applicant, Peter Wallif, maybe he could discuss that a little bit more.
Yes, please.
Appreciate the question, Ignacio. So the intent is to, to keep, there's a residential apartment that's located existing commercial, you know, the actual church itself. I believe there was a pastor that lived there from one of the old congregations for a handful of years. So the goal is to keep that residential component and actually make it a piece that would attract a new user. You know, one of the reasons, for instance, it's a possible scenario and one of the reasons we wanted to leave that residential is this interesting kind of live work scenario where you could have an art studio, an art gallery, a photography studio, professional studio down below in the commercial area and the actual congregation area. And then have the ability for that individual that owned that business or operated that business to live above and actually kind of maintain some of the, what you used to see before with the church with the pastor living there and working there. But yes, the goal is to to keep the residential.
Okay, and I can, I cannot picture exactly which is the, the worship area and which is the, the, I, I assume the, the one area that has the higher ceiling is the worship area. So the shorter, is that correct?
The worship area is located to the western portion of the building.
Right.
So you essentially walk in, I'd say that, you know, the commercial area would be below when you, when you walk in off of that surface parking lot, the residential unit is located above that commercial area. And then the actual congregation area is located to the western portion of the site.
Okay, so that is somewhere around twenty five hundred square feet?
The residential or the non residential?
I guess the, 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 the area that you're calling residential. There's a reason why I'm asking this question.
I think it's a little smaller than that, Ignacio. I don't have exact square footage. I want to say it's somewhere closer to the ballpark of less than two thousand square feet, but probably right around fifteen hundred.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So Libby, going back to chapter, article eleven of the, of the code, which is the limitations, the first question that I asked myself was, well, why is it not just remaining with the, with the current some designation and use the limitations that you have to allow for commercial because that is, it's, there are a limited uses and there also some, some other zoning permits that can be given based on that, but they have a cap. Twenty percent of the building or one thousand, which areas less one thousand square feet. So obviously, these two thousand square feet would not fit into, into that. We have seen in the past, in the past six years, several rezonings of churches which actually tend to be less embedded in the neighborhoods and more on the, on, on collectors or arterials. I'm trying to, to justify that the justifying circumstances that you explain are, are, are actually valid. That number four criterion is really the crux of the matter here. You said it, it is your strongest article. And one of the purposes, Fred talked about it earlier today, for P U Ds is just to be very specific and we want to stay away from those. So the, the whole genesis of the Ember zoning code was to impart, stay away from, from P U Ds. When I looked at this P U D, I thought that this was a throwaway P U D, especially because of the clause that you said that if this building gets demolished, it will go back to US U B. So the sun law will go back to US U B. So you know, are there, I, I, well, I guess I'm on the deliberation, not so much in the question. The question was the, the, the amount of commercial that is needed here and why not stay within the parameters of the, of the current zoning? So I don't know if you have an, an answer for that. Obviously, your presentation addressed that already. Thanks.
Thank you.
Libby, did you have anything to add to, to that as to, as to why not stay with the current zoning or have you covered that sufficiently?
I think we've pretty well addressed that, that the existing zoning does not allow for reuse of this church in a very viable manner. I mean, it seems to me like if we were going to impose the use restrictions on this particular building indefinitely, that eventually it would just be a vacant building until somebody finally came along and demolished it and built under the existing US U B regulations. And our blueprint Denver policies very clearly embrace reusing these non residential buildings that are embedded in our single unit neighborhoods and making them viable into the future. And while we, as I mentioned, like, we would like to avoid a P U D. We are seeing these churches abandoned kind of throughout the city and we'd love to develop a more holistic approach to addressing them in a manner that avoids P U Ds, but right now that's, that's the tool that we have.
Thank you. Heidi.
Thank you, Joel. So Libby, an area I'd like to explore with you when we consider a P U D because they are very unique. And I think the planning board members here are being rightfully thoughtful about granting a P U D. Is this idea of the P U D being applied to unique and special circumstance and adaptive reuse? And so I've heard from the public and a couple other people have hit on it, that it's not necessarily vacant. Yeah, that, that the church congregation is still in there. And what I'm wondering is how relevant that is because does our, our, our acceptance of a P U D or our, or our denial of a P U D really, is that really going to dictate what happens in the building? And so I, I guess what I'm asking you is how relevant is what's actually occurring in the current building to the granting of a P U D? Is it, is it really, is it? Is, should I really be considering whether there's a church congregation in there or not when I'm considering a P U D?
And how do you think that goes a little bigger? Like, I don't know that a single congregation that uses it a few hours of the week means that that building is really functioning as a church and fully being used, right? I think it's still ultimately being underutilized. And just based on national trends and what we've seen throughout the city, this church will likely not function for congregational purposes within the next few years. And so by continuing to limit it to the uses that are only allowed within the US U B, it's, it's most likely that it would eventually be demolished and built as a couple of residential units, which that's what our zoning allows, but it's not necessarily what's supported by our plan policies.
Okay, thank you, Libby. That's what I'm just trying to get at is I, I don't necessarily think that, I'm, I'm trying to understand how I should consider the existing use that's in the building with what our plan guide says about, about granting a P U D. And I'm not seeing the clear connection between granting a P U D and what might exactly be going on in the building at this time. Yeah, I, I'm understanding your answer. It's, it's making sense to me.
Right, yeah, but that, that direct nexus nexus between what's going on there today and what the P U D would allow. I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily like one of the, one of the things that we're, we're really looping into the P U D criteria. And as I did mention, like, that congregation could continue to be allowed to operate in that church if that's something that's viable for the owner. Otherwise, they may be able to still allow some small space for congregations while transitioning to something else, but ultimately, I don't know what, what the exact future looks like for this development. And I think we just need to figure out whether or not this P U D allows for the right approach.
Right, that's what's always tricky, Libby, is just when we're looking at rezoning as use. It's easy to get hung up on use. And I'm just trying to get to that heart of our criteria of what, of why we would grant and why we would allow P U D. So thanks for your answer.
Thank you. I'll follow up on a few questions. The first, just jumping off of the justifying circumstances, the whole, the question about is there currently a congregation there or not? Certainly, we don't have any criteria that says, you know, there must not be a current active tenant to have a rezoning. But yet we have this, you know, perhaps the least favorite of my criteria, which is justifying circumstances in, 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 in my way of thinking about how planning should guide zoning. If, if one is seeking zoning, the question should be, is it consistent with plans? And that, that should be the whole question, but we do have this criteria justifying circumstances. And changed or changing conditions is what's cited. And specifically, this change that we see very often and, and Libby, you talked about with churches going away. I'm looking at page twenty nine of the application. And that's what the applicant cites, that the two congregations that previously owned the church cited decreased demand for religious services as part of the reason why they sold it to the current owner. So in, in terms of staff's analysis of justifying circumstances, you, you, you found that to be sufficient, that that this shows that it's part of this broader pattern we're familiar with. Is, is that right?
That's one of the justifying circumstances. Certainly, it is a trend that's occurring throughout the city and one that Blueprint acknowledges as well, that we really need to get ahead of this and develop a more holistic approach. So that's one of the justifying circumstances. And the other is the fact that the plan does have specific policy related to this exact condition.
Okay, let, let's talk a little bit about the tension that Fred talked about, because I, I think it's probably the most interesting part of this. Most neighborhoods have embedded non residential uses. And broadly, they're commercial and non commercial, non residential uses. So the corner store, you know, traditionally, traditional neighborhoods would have corner stores and the like. So structures that were built for non residential purposes and have had, whether it's a retail store or, or something else that we're very familiar with being embedded within neighborhoods. The zoning code allows that when those change use, they can, even if their zoning is residential, they can pick from a limited mixed use, use list as if they were zoned U M S two X. The other category is non residential, non commercial. So schools and churches typically that are, you find embedded within neighborhoods. And we don't have a good built into the zoning code list of alternate uses for those structures. They're, they're certainly not built for residential use. This was not built to be simply residential. But because it's in a residential zone district, it, it really only has the choice of being residential or a school or a church, essentially. So we have Blueprint Denver guidance that says we should be pro adaptive reuse. And we also have Blueprint Denver guidance that says in, in residential areas where there are institutional uses that go away, that might be an opportunity to increase residential density on corners and, and places where, where institutional uses did exist. So, so my question is, am I right in looking at the P U D and seeing that we're, we're leaning towards the former of the two goals in Blueprint Denver to promote adaptive reuse? But because this wasn't a commercial use before, we're not going as far as we might with a corner store where they can just do the X, the two X list of uses, it's a negotiated list, rather than leaning towards the other also recommendation of our plans, which is opportunistically increased density for residential. Was that kind of the key choice that was made?
That is, I mean, and it's not necessarily a choice, like a staff would love to avoid P U Ds, but clearly our zoning code does not allow for every single circumstance or development that might be opportunistic at a particular site. So here, in order, in order to kind of facilitate like reuse of this church, this P U D we felt was the best vehicle. Otherwise, within the US U B, even with demolishing this church and redeveloping it, it would not meet the plan goals of maybe increasing residential density at the site. And to really facilitate any new commercial uses, that would probably still mean demolishing the building and building the more general or shop front commercial building to allow for those other uses. So, and that would be, I think, much more impactful to the neighborhood than maintaining the existing building.
I see. So it sounds like you're walking an interesting line where if, if there was an application for and, and plan support for a, a, a U M X two X zoning, that would itself not incentivize the reuse. It would allow the wider use list. But the incentive might be there to replace the building in a place where our plans say, well, it's on two local streets and, you know, there aren't a lot of indicators. This is the right place for it to incentivize replacing the building. So the P U D has been crafted to, if the building chooses to remain, it has a, a, a somewhat wider use list that's been negotiated. a, a somewhat wider use list that's been negotiated. And if they decide not to, then it's clear what will happen as well in terms of, without having a rezoning, still being able to do what USUB allows.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think that's really a key point there, is that if this was rezoned into the UMS or UMX districts, that almost incentivizes demolishing the existing building and building something brand new and really maximizing the use of that site in, in something that's not as appropriate in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Okay, that, that really helps me understand the intention behind finding the path to the PUD. It's, it's, it's leaning on that adaptive reuse. I, I do appreciate that. And Joel?
Yeah, um, I, I am curious about the small area plan for this particular spot. What does it, how does it guide this decision if it does? And how recent is the plan?
Unfortunately, the plan's from 1991. So it was well before the zoning code was updated to 2010. And yet, it still acknowledges the existence of churches and other civic buildings in the neighborhood and says that they do fit in compatibly and lend themselves to the character of the neighborhood and that they should be preserved where they currently exist.
Right. And yeah, this is our dilemma, because in 1991, churches, people were still getting up, going to church on Sunday. I say it as someone married to a pastor and similar scenarios that I've seen. And without updated guidance of, you know, the thought processes from community about the area and without a comprehensive plan about this adaptive reuse, it's, we're left, you're left to be responsive to an application and find the best fit, it feels like. I, I think, I, I like the idea of adaptive reuse in this, this may be for the next section. But it just, it just feels like it's, it's, it's hard for the planning, the folks at Planning to be strategic without these tools, the, the small area plan, a comprehensive plan about adapter reuse. And I know it's on the way, but i- i- in the meanwhile, it feels like this is the best option.
Thank you, Ignacio.
So, you know, this, this PUD is kind of a black and white, black or white thing. You know, there is no gray zone here. And the gray zone in, in, in one scenario could be, now I'm looking at the, the worship area of the building. It, it is, it is the original. It has some character. I'm an architect, so I can tell you that. And that one scenario would be played something like the idea of the art studio is, is actually a really good one. Let's preserve that, that, that space. But demolish the rest because the rest actually doesn't have that architectural character. Well, then your PUD would be completely useless in that scenario. And you would not be able to do anything in, in, in that, in that scenario. How would you play that? Were you be able to make a modification to section 4.3 of the PUD or?
I'm sorry, could you clarify your question?
So, so the question is, the, the premise to the question is that the PUD is very specific, is black or white? You know, is you keep the building the way it is? Or, you know, if you demolish it, then you go back to USUB, right? There is, there is one scenario that I don't see if you played it out, which was the keeping of the worship space, which is the western part of the building, the one that has architectural character, the original building and so on. That is not played out anywhere, right? Could the PUD, since the PUD is a tool for doing that kind of stuff, be amended in a way that you keep, be able to keep that part and still develop the rest of the building, the rest of the zone lots?
No, I don't think anybody wants to see additional development on the zone lot around the existing building. They certainly do need to maintain the existing surface parking lot in order to service future use of the building. So, I mean, the, the worship area under the existing zoning, as well as the PUD, can continue to be utilized for future congregations. Or, as I mentioned, maybe there's a potential to maintain some worship space and start introducing some of the other spaces allowed in the PUD. But ultimately, and I think really based on, based on the fact that we're just trying to implement our plan guidance regarding reuse of an existing building and based on the feedback from the neighborhood of wanting to either use that building or see it developed under the USUB Zone District. We didn't want to incentivize any more development around the existing building.
All right, let me rephrase it this way then. Partial demolition? Would, it's not, is there space for partial, partial demolition of this? All right. Thank you. I, I guess Peter wants to add something. I would like to, Joel, if you have no objection, let Peter respond.
Mr. Wolf?
Thanks, Ignacio. I think I know what you're getting at. So let me try and chime in here. Based on the interest that not only the property owner Leon, but his broker have seen, there really hasn't been a conversation around partial demolition. Because future users, whether it be a dentist or whether it would be an artist, there's, there's a desire to preserve the entire structure. So they think, even though, agree with you, the place of worship definitely has the most architectural integrity and, and is the most interesting. The rest of the building still certainly has, you know, a good use for a future user. And I think that's why that we structured the PUD in such a way that we, we didn't want to look at partial demolition as a viable option there, because it just wasn't something that we've really seen interest in, based on interest from potential future users here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Gosha and, and Joel. Gosha?
Yes, thank you. So to me, where I struggle, my, my question is, because I think the whole application kind of hinges on the assumption that the building carries the value and, and utilizing the existing structure is more beneficial or more in accordance with adopted plans that demolition and replacing with, with something else. And so I wonder, you know, because we start seeing more and more of these PUDs, and I think that's concerning. I think we're all kind of troubled by it. So I tried to get to the essence of this decision. Like, how do we decide which structures merit special treatment? Because in this case, definitely the, the zone lot is receiving a special treatment by receiving that PUD. So how do we decide what structures or what conditions are, are warrant this kind of treatment versus, versus not? And I think the reason I ask that question is because as we look at the PUD, there are very specific drawings, both site drawings and elevation drawings that kind of speak to the design and architecture. And I think we're trying to avoid making these decisions, right? We were trying to avoid making policy decisions or entitlement decisions based on design or specific configuration of the site. So that's where I'm a little troubled. I would like to hear your opinion about how, how was it this, how are these decisions made? How was, how was this decision made to warrant the special treatment to this particular structure?
I appreciate that question. And I think it's something that if we could ever fit it into our, our work program to develop a more holistic approach to addressing similar instances throughout the city, then developing criteria to determine what structures should be preserved would be excellent. But right now, we don't have that criteria. And we just pretty much have a blanket policy within Blueprint that says that we should be preserving these buildings, even if they're not historic. And it gets really subjective into trying to determine whether or not someone thinks one building is worthy of preservation or another outside of kind of our historic landmarking designation. But I really appreciate the consideration. And I think that it's, it's something that the city should kind of put in its back pocket as it continues to consider these rezoning requests, because they're likely in the pipeline.
Thank you for sharing my concern and the response. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we turn to deliberation? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for deliberation. Fred?
Hi, thanks. And boy, thanks for an extended question, question session. Lots of good information that came out of there. I have a couple of comments I want to make. I mean, this whole question of what is, I think, very much a traditional Chapter 59 PUD is, is an interesting one. And, and I have to admit to some misgivings about doing something like that, I, I fear. And if it weren't wildly inappropriate, I'd be taking bets on when this property might come back for a rezoning because they're unable to make it work within the constraints of this, whether it's, you know, now or in 10 years. And so that does worry me, because I think that's contradictory to what the city was trying to achieve with the 2010 zoning code. At the same time, I would like to say that I, I heard very much from Libby about how they got to this point. And I appreciate the fact that this is coming to us as a customized zoning, rather than coming to us as a conforming zone district with either covenants or deed restrictions being proposed to go alongside it, which I think is a, something that we have seen people using in Denver to simulate customized zoning. And I think it is problematic, because suddenly you've got it sitting on the title instead of in the zoning. And that creates some other issues. So I do, I do appreciate that if this is the path they were going to go down, that they're bringing it forward in, in zoning as opposed to pretending that it's a conforming zone district and putting restrictions on the property through deed restrictions that create all kinds of other issues going forward. I think it's important for, just to note that the change of use, even to these less intensive uses, is likely to be a challenging and expensive proposition for the property owner. And I comment on this so that we give some thought as the city discusses policies about adaptive reuse to figuring out how to make adaptive reuse financially viable. Because that is, as a developer, I can tell you a concern. Finally, I want to comment on this question of churches and whether the, well, actually, one more after this. This, this question of, of what's happening with churches as a change in, in circumstance that, that justifies a rezoning. You know, I, I really think that if we look back at land use patterns in this country, churches were seen as a necessary neighborhood amenity. They were placed there, they were community resource, they were walkable, they were community-based. And I think they were often included in master planning as something that was a, a critical piece. And we're now seeing that changing. So this isn't just about, at least in my perspective, just about churches having a hard time making congregations work. I think how churches work are different and the land use implications are different in that congregations now are not geographically based in the same way that they once were in this country. People drive to church very often now, as we heard from some of the commentators who talked about how much street parking church services did take up. So I think that that is a, a change in how we see land use in this country. And so I, that to my mind is a little bit different. I, the crux of this for me, because we go back to the criteria, really does resolve around that question I asked, which I think Joel expanded upon a bit, about the, what we see in the future places versus the adaptive reuse. I think the adaptive reuse language is very strong in Blueprint. And I think one of our jobs here, be, if, if it was just a matter of ticking boxes, we wouldn't necessarily need a planning board to examine whether or not an application meets the criteria. It is sometimes a matter of weighing and balancing and, and trying to understand where the emphasis is. And I believe that there's enough leeway in that future places that speaks to some of this. And I believe that the language around adaptive reuse, particularly of former institutional buildings, is strong enough that I believe there's plan support for this, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Very thoughtful as always. I want to thank everybody who came to speak today and everybody who wrote letters. As, as always happens, when there's differences of opinion, is, planning board is, is in the position of listening to everybody, but needing to filter what we hear down to what helps us, what informs us about analyzing the criteria. And, and so my comments, my colleagues' comments, of course, will, will speak to that. But it doesn't mean that we haven't heard your, your other opinions and preferences. I, I, I won't bury the lead here. I do believe this meets the criteria, but I want to, I want to pull it apart a little bit, because I think it's, I think it's actually very interesting. When I received my planning board packet, we could go to review this and got to, got to looking through it. My first thought was, oh, no, PUD. I thought we weren't trying to do that. And, oh, no, limited use list. Okay, is this just a fight over the use list? But fortunately, it's a lot more interesting than that. This isn't a commercial building. This wasn't a building created for commercial purposes. This is a, a building that was created to be a church embedded in a residential neighborhood. And so it doesn't have access to other uses it can do unless the zoning has changed. So to one of the comments from a neighbor who said, I don't know why we need to change the zoning. If the building is to be preserved and reused, which is a question, which is an, an option for the property owner, then essentially, if it's not going to be used for its built purpose, it probably needs a zoning change. It needs more allowances. And I appreciate that you all spent a couple of years negotiating what those allowances would be. But we do have this, this tension in the plan guidance between opportunistically, you know, we're in a housing crisis, let's add more housing. Not two more single units on, on a big lot, but, you know, something more than that, because it is an opportunity and Blueprint calls on us to look for those opportunities. On the other hand, it, it says, and the neighborhood plan says, preserve these church structures. They're important to the character of the neighborhood. And although the neighborhood plan is a little bit older, that element of what it says is there, is adopted plan guidance. And this building was already there at the time that the plan was created. So this building is even older than the plan guidance. So I don't see any conflict leaning towards trying to make adaptive reuse work. And I can see all the pieces lining up here to say, we don't know that it will work out to find an art studio or an office or one of the allowed uses. But if it does, let's, let's encourage it to work by saying you get to keep this building and use it for these purposes, provided you keep the building. If you don't, if you don't keep the building, then the PUD is not setting up an incentive of higher density as, as encouragement to demolish the building. You just get kind of the same zoning that, that is in the neighborhood without having to rezone. This reverts to that, to that use list and those forms. I think this makes this better than a former Chapter 59 rezoning. Let me, let me use an example from my neighborhood. We talked about churches and schools, but another thing that can often happen within neighborhoods is like a fire station. This little fire station at 32nd and Curtis. And the fire department no longer needed it. They have bigger, better, you know, fire stations and response times, et cetera. So it was sold, but nobody wanted to demolish it. It's, it's got neat funky character. And so under former Chapter 59, which is, for those of you watching, it's the old zoning code. And so under former chapter fifty-nine, which is, for those of you watching, it's the old zoning code, they did a P U D. And they wanted to do a P U D to allow a a pro-social employment use called the Women's Bean Project, where low-income women would come together and you know, get employment experience, produce something that there's a demand for, get get experience both on production side, sales side, et cetera. Wonderful organization. That P U D was written for bean assembly. If you read that P U D, it is ridiculous. It says you're going to use this many square feet for putting things in boxes and this many square feet for a little kitchen area and this many square feet for sorting beans or whatever. And if you ever wanted to change what you're doing, you had to go rezone. Not just from Women's Bean Project to something else, because the whole thing was about bean assembly written into the zoning code, but even they stopped using a commercial kitchen and needed more space to assemble boxes. Technically, they were in violation of their zoning. Because their zoning was telling them how many square feet they use for commercial kitchen versus, you know, putting things in bags. This is far better than that. This establishes a a list of uses that can be used in the existing building. And yes, it has a site plan and yes, it has elevations, but it's trying to encourage the if you keep the existing building, you get to do these things. But if you don't keep the existing building, it says what happens then? Our past P U Ds never said what happens then. It just throws you to the wolves and you 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 have to go do a rezoning. And the rezoning churn with custom zoning was one of the many terrible aspects about this. This has it embedded in. If you don't keep the building, then this is what happens. And so I think this is an interesting evolution of using P U Ds and how how they can incentivize what we want, but also have a path right in them for what happens if if we don't don't get that, what reasonable thing is next? So not only do I think this meets the criteria, I just wanted to praise that, although it took me all week to to really see how it came together and and what staff is doing with the evolution of custom zoning. I can say more, but I've already said a lot. Thanks for honoring the neighborhood plan. And I agree with Fred that as complicated as P U Ds are, this is better than shadow regulations that are negotiated privately and not, you know, visible to everybody. Thank you. Go shop.
Yeah, thank you, Joel. I agree with, everything has been said, just kind of want to layer a little more of my perspective on it. I really agree with the premise of this rezoning. I think both adaptive reuse and incorporating neighborhood service serving businesses are the right way. I I think now we talk about it oftentimes that expanding the definition of the the residential zoning to allow the the neighborhood serving businesses to serve the neighborhoods that they're in makes perfect sense. It also, I'm I'm a big in proponent of allowing buildings to evolve and change and shift between residential and commercial use or light retail, whatever, however we define it. It makes sense for cities to evolve and kind of shift and for us to reuse the structures that exist. So I think I'm I'm very much supportive of the premise of the app or or the the background of the application. I do struggle with the format or the tool that we're using to achieve this outcome. And I kind of want to go back to what Ignacio was saying that I think the the application or the the P U D is very rigid in the sense that preserves entire structure or it's it's all or nothing and doesn't allow for any flexibility, like what if in the future, ten years from now, somebody wanted to reuse part of the structure, maybe expand it or demolish for to allow for more open space or any other variation of it. So so I think work is still kind of stuck in this kind of a very rigid P U D net sense that doesn't allow for some flexibility and more evolution of this structure that maybe is partially historical and part of it is worth preserving, but maybe not all of it. So that's where I am. I looking forward to hearing the other comments before I make my decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ignacio.
So one of the things I said during my question opportunity actually was more of the diatribe about what this is and and you know, this this, I don't think I'm wrong calling it a throwaway P U D. And because of of the issue of the demolition and I wouldn't, I would even say that a partial demolition would actually void the 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 entire P U D. And and then if you want to keep the the worship area, then you have to either change zoning or go back to U S U B. So but the I think the 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 real point here is the the justified circumstance. And what we were told in the in the in the presentation is that the justifiable circumstances that the changing conditions affect this area and reflect a national trend of declining congregations and closing churches. Yeah, that is, that is a, that is a fact. I don't think that that fact alone is a justifying circumstance. And, you know, previous board members had a real hard time with this fourth criterion. What is really the justifying circumstance? And the issue is that the rezoning has to be in the public interest. You know, so what is in the public interest that this rezoning is would be permissible? And one, one argument of the preservation of the of the building a sustainable and resilient community is valid. The greenest building is the building that is already built. I I I I buy that argument. So just because this is a throwaway P U D, I will be supporting the the application.
Thank you. Any other deliberation? Okay, I would entertain a motion with the reminder that we have seven planning board members present and to pass any motion, we need five votes. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Fred?
I move to recommend that City Council approve official map amendment, application number twenty-twenty I zero zero one four one for one thousand one and one thousand three South Pearl Street from U S U B to P U D G twenty-nine, finding that the applicable review criteria have been met.
It's been moved by Fred and seconded by Ignacio. Discussion on the motion. Okay, do a roll call vote. Angel?
I.
Fred?
I.
Gosha?
I.
Heidi?
Hi.
Ignacio?
I.
Jordan?
I.
And I vote I as well. That passes unanimously with seven votes. Thank you very much. I'll give the board an option. We've been going for an hour and a half. We have one rezoning hearing left before we have two very interesting info items. We have no speakers signed up that I see for the next item. My inclination is to go through the next rezoning and then take a little break. Is that all right with everyone? All right, I've seen some thumbs up. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for official map amendment application two zero two two I zero 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 two eight, a rezoning of six-ten South Vine Street from U S U C to U S U C one. And we have Edson Ibanez with a staff report.
Can you see my screen? Just wanted to make sure.
You're you're not in presentation mode.
Sorry, I was speaking to mute. Thank you, Fred.
Let me try again. My screen's kind of acting up right now.
It may be that if you if you leave it in presentation mode, stop sharing and then start sharing, you can pick the this the window that is the presentation.
Okay. Let me try again. Perfect. Can you see that now?
Looks great. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Edson Ibanez. I am with CPD. And today before you, we're presenting six-ten South Vine Street. And it is going from U S U C one to U S U C, U S U C to U S U C one. So the property, subject property is located in Council District Six in the Washington Park neighborhood. So the request is from a single unit zone district with a minimum lot size of fifty-five hundred square feet to a U S U C one, which is a single unit zone district with a minimum lot size of fifty-five hundred square feet, but it would allow for an accessory dwelling unit. Currently, it is a single unit dwelling and it is just over six thousand square feet. The zoning is U S U C. It's surrounded by U S U C, which is single unit zone district. In close proximity, we do have an M U, a multi-unit zone district, and M S, which is a main street zone district. So the subject property, like I mentioned, is a single, single-story single-family house is on the top left corner and it is predominantly between one and two-story structures in close proximity to the site. And it is before you today is tentatively scheduled to go before City Council on August first. And to date, we've received two letters of support and then six letters of opposition. One of the letters of opposition is from the East Washington Park R and O, which voted for the application stating that it is not consistent with the review criteria. And then the other five letters mention concerns around property values, parking, traffic, quality of life, short-term rental concerns, and safety. Now, there are several review criteria that we analyze for a rezoning case. And here are the five, and I will jump into these. So the first one is consistent with adopted plans. And this specific property falls under two plans, which is Conference and Plan twenty-forty and Blueprint Denver Alliance and Transportation Plan twenty-nineteen. There are several, this specific application falls under several strategies found in Conference and Plan twenty-forty that are specified in the staff report. Now, within Blueprint Denver, this area is classified as urban, which is small, multi-unit residential and low-intensity mixed-use buildings are typically embedded in single unit and two-unit residential areas. And it's classified as residential law for the future place type, which is predominantly single and two-unit uses and accessory dwelling units are appropriate. For the street type, Vine Street, as well as center, are both local streets, but which are primarily characterized by residential uses. And then for all other areas of the city for the future growth area where we anticipate ten percent of reemployment and twenty percent of new housing. Blueprint also has a specific policy in the land use and built form housing policy four that specifically says diversify housing choice through the expansion of accessory dwelling units throughout all residential areas. And for review criteria two, three, and five, it is found consistent as specified in the staff report. And for the fourth criteria, justifying circumstances, it is consistent by a city adopted plan as referenced within Blueprint by allowing ADUs in all residential areas. Therefore, CPD recommends approval basing, based that all the findings of the review criteria have been met. I am open for questions as well as the applicant slash property owner is here to also answer any questions.
Thank you. And the applicant is only for questions or is there a presentation?
No, no, just just for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We do not have anyone sign up in advance to make comment on this item. But I see we have eleven people from the public on. If you did come to speak to this item, if you could use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And we will call on you. This is this is that part of the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up, but I will just note for the record that we all did receive the communications that Edson spoke about, spoke about, even ones that came in quite recently have been forwarded. So we will be taking those into account. We'll move to questions from the board to staff or the applicant. Fred?
Thanks. Edson, can I just ask one quick question? A couple of the comments referenced short-term rentals. And I'm just just kind of wondering, is is there any evidence that ADUs are more often used as short-term rentals than other types of properties?
I don't know. I don't have the data for that specifically. I know that that's a question that comes up and most of the time, we 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 let, we had, we let the individuals that have concerns talk to existing licensing because there is specific requirements that if they do want to do a short-term rental license like an Airbnb, then they can only do the A D U. They can't do their primary residence. So there's specific limitations of what can be done. I'm not sure. Andrew, do you know? Have you seen those numbers?
Thanks, Edson. I I have not, but I'm I'm be glad to to see if we can track those down and and provide them to the board.
I I just think it's it's, you know, it is a concern people raise and I'm not sure that there's, I'm not sure that it's a well-founded concern, but I haven't seen the data to support it or or refute it. So I I just think it's a question that we might want to look at later, but thank you.
Thank you. There were still on questions. Heidi?
Thank you, Joel. I just wanted to respond to Fred anecdotally. There's ten houses on my block face, two have ADUs, both are long-term rentals. It's just anecdotal. That's not quantitative, but an observation that at least provides you some data point. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. With no more questions, I'll close the public hearing and ask for deliberations. Fred?
Thanks. I I had two quick comments I wanted to make, mostly with regards to the public comment because I think that the plan guidance is very clear in this case. However, there were a couple of things that really concerned me that I saw in the in the comments. And again, I I raised this because I think there are issues that we as a city probably need to speak to at some point. The first is that the R and O's comments about this not being consistent with adopted plans because it's not consistent with the adopted zoning code was baffling. And I think displays a kind of concerning lack of understanding of how plans and zoning work together in Denver. And if we are to continue in this city to grant R and O's sort of a special official status of representing neighborhoods and and there's, that's a whole other question. It just seems to me that there has got to be some training for R and O's of some sort. So that's one. The the second is 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 that I I do want to comment because I saw this and and it really bothered me, this implication that those who can afford to live in ADUs, i.e. those of lesser means are somehow less worthy. The implication that simply because someone lives in an A D U as a renter, that they jeopardize the safety of their neighbors is concerning and and frankly, kind of offensive. The statement that A D U tenants are often in transition. My my own A D U tenant, who is a long-term tenant, is in transition. She's a single woman who's a nurse and in the midst of completing pre-med. So she's transitioning from being a nurse to being a doctor. And that the implication that somehow she is less worthy of living in one of our neighborhoods is deeply, deeply concerning to me and and to the point of being offensive. So I I'm sorry, I just felt I had to say something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ignacio.
Yeah, no, I think this also, I agree that this meets all the criteria. And we are seeing, you know, like a little resurgence of resistance to ADUs. That is understandable. People are That is understandable. People are afraid of the unknown. And I don't know what the statistics are for this east Washington Park neighborhood in terms of how many dwelling units have ADUs, but it's not as many other neighborhoods. And we're just in the beginning of the ADU era, if you want, for Denver, which I think, again, take the opportunity to say that the whole city should be blanketed with the ability to have these additional dwelling units in all single-family neighborhoods. So it's understandable that people fear parking and, and so on, but the benefits are greater than, than, than the opposite. There will be more eyes on the street, more eyes in the alleys. And that will actually even build community better, even if the ADU is used as a short-term rental. There's, there's, there's no, there's no ill on that either. So I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, my colleagues have said all the salient points. I just want to reiterate that I believe this meets the criteria. Blueprint's very clear that ADUs should be allowed in all areas encourages the city to legislatively change the zoning to allow them in all area, all residential areas. And until that is done, specifically calls on us to support individual rezonings. So it, it meets that and, and all of the other criteria. And thank you, Fred, for getting there first on the response to the, to the RNO's. We, we had a longtime member of the planning board, Don Elliott, who worked all over the country on zoning codes, and he always praised Denver in having a clear distinction between planning and zoning and then administrative implementation of the zoning and other regulations. We, we keep those very clearly separate and they flow downwards. You know, we, we do our community plans and that informs what the zoning should be. And when you have the zoning, that controls what you're allowed to do in terms of buildings and, and uses. And so the confusion that you can't change the zoning, because it would change the zoning, shows that there's some confusion among those three levels. And the prescription, of course, is education, and we should do more with whatever we're doing with RNO's or other ways we organize community input and, and information. But we also need to be sure that we don't slip. And by we, I mean everyone involved at the city level on volunteer boards and commissions, like Planning Board and City Council and staff, to always keep those layers very separate and clear, because that's a great strength that Denver has. And when other cities get wrapped around the axle and have debates about, should we get the zoning? Do, do I like the color that, of the building that they're going to build? You know, they're confusing these levels. So I'd like the fact that we keep that distinct. I'm looking for any other deliberation and seeing no deliberation from planning board members, I'll ask for a motion.
I will, if nobody else can step forward. I move to recommend that City Council approve Official Map Amendment, Application Number twenty twenty-two I dash zero 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 two eight at six ten Vine Street, actually six, I believe that's six ten South Vine Street, from USUC to USUC one, finding that the applicable review criteria have been met.
Second. Moved by Fred and seconded by Jordan. Any discussion on the motion? I'll do a roll call vote. Angel?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Gosha?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Ignacio?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That's seven ayes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to take a, a short recess. Let's come back at the top of the hour, about a seven-minute recess. I'll see you at five o'clock. Please turn off your cameras and microphones while you're gone. And please turn them, turn on your camera when you return, so we know everyone's here. Thank you. And planning board members, as you return, if I could ask you to turn on your cameras, so we know when everyone is back. We're waiting for Ignacio, Jordan, and Gosha. Hello, Ignacio. And Jordan and Gosha, when you get back, if you could turn on your cameras, we'll know that you're here. Hello, Jordan. And Gosha, are you back with us? Okay, while we're waiting for Gosha, I'll just say we're on the part of the agenda that's information items. This is the part of the agenda that we receive information publicly about matters that are upcoming. They may be things in progress or things nearing completion. Today, we have two information items, Cherry Creek East Overlay and the Sunnyside Overlay. Welcome back, Libby Kaiser, who's going to tell us about the Cherry Creek Overlay, Cherry Creek East Overlay. And welcome back, Gosha. We are ready to begin. Over you to you, Libby.
All right. All right, here we go. So hello again, planning board members. I am Libby Kaiser with CPD, and I am going to provide a status update regarding proposed design overlays for Cherry Creek East. There are two design overlays proposed. The street level and upper story setbacks with open space alternatives, Design Overlay District, or DO nine, would apply to multi-unit in mixed-use commercial districts, while the front porch and landscaping at Residential Design Overlay District, or DO ten, would apply to low-sail residential districts. Properties currently within planned unit developments, of which there are many in Cherry Creek East, would not be affected unless they were rezoned. As the overlays could be applied to other areas within the city, they have been given more descriptive titles rather than specifically referencing Cherry Creek East. City Councilman Chris Hines of Council District Ten plans to submit a proposal for legislative rezoning to apply the new design overlay districts to the Cherry Creek East neighborhood, which is located southwest of Alameda Avenue and Colorado Boulevard. The proposed overlays are the result of a multi-year process led by the Cherry Creek East Association with assistance from City Council District Ten and consulting services. Councilman Hines has requested a text amendment to establish the design overlays and plans to request a map amendment to apply them to properties within the neighborhood. Now, design overlays are tools that the city can use to enhance design outcomes in a particular area by adding or modifying standards to the underlying zone district. And an overlay cannot be used to restrict or expand the uses allowed in the underlying district. Within Blueprint Denver, it says that design overlays can be appropriate in developing or redeveloping areas with a specific design vision, such as Cherry Creek East, where the Cherry Creek Area Plan of two thousand twelve recommends tools such as upper story setbacks to allow sunlight to reach the street. And highlighted here from the Cherry Creek Area Plan is a recommendation to explore how upper story setbacks and other horizontal breaks in building facades can make streets more pedestrian-friendly. And now I will dig into the DO nine overlay that applies to commercial areas. So it's and is to enhance and promote a quality urban environment with a vibrant sense of place, including access to generous pedestrian zones and public spaces with streets that prioritize the pedestrian realm as a defining element of neighborhood character with buildings that relate to pedestrians in scale and activity. And the overlay would apply to properties within multi-unit residential office, residential mixed-use, mixed-use, and main street zone districts in Cherry Creek East. Here's a couple of the existing commercial buildings in Cherry Creek East. And you can see that they lack upper story setbacks and don't have a great sense of pedestrian scale or orientation. So to help achieve better design, the DO nine overlay includes several building form standards that would be applied in addition to the standards of the underlying zone district. The first requires the building frontage along a primary street to be within five to twenty feet of the lot line. And that can be reduced to zero fifteen feet if private open space is provided for no more than twenty-five percent of the building frontage. The building form standards also require five-foot setbacks from primary and side streets. However, a zero-foot setback is allowed if at least seven percent of the zone lot contains private open space. Within thirteen thousand square feet, non-parking uses shall occupy the floor area above street level for a minimum depth of fifteen feet for at least seventy percent of the front edge along primary and side streets. As an alternative, structured parking facades must be integrated into the overall facade design through use of similar building materials and facade articulation and fenestration patterns, as well as non-transparent facade materials and fully shielded lighting. This limitation to visible parking and its alternative are similar to the standards in the existing Rhino Design Overlay, but this overlay takes it a step further and requires parking floors be adaptable to other uses for a minimum depth of thirty feet from the primary or side-street-facing building facade. These graphics help show how the overlay could be applied. The building on the left utilizes a five-foot street-level setback and upper-story setbacks to improve the streetscape and reduce the building's mass. In lieu of these setbacks, the building on the right provides private open space on at least ten percent of the lot. In both instances, the overlay allows enough flexibility to encourage creative building designs while helping to improve the quality of the built environment. The building from standards in DO nine establishes, preserves access to daylight and promotes creative building designs. On buildings greater than six stories, a thirteen-foot setback would be required above the third story. And on buildings greater than nine stories, a twenty-foot setback would also be required above the ninth story. And on buildings greater than nine stories, a 20-foot setback would also be required above the ninth story. The exact depth of these setbacks is still being evaluated and could change, among other standards, based on additional feedback from the Cherry Creek East Neighborhood Association and the general public. Then moving on to the second overlay, the intent of the proposed DO10 overlay is to promote pedestrian-friendly street frontages and enhance neighborhood safety impressions of residential neighborhoods that are comprised primarily of single-unit, two-unit, and rowhouse development. And the overlay would apply similarly to properties with single-unit, two-unit, and rowhouse zone districts in Cherry Creek East, but could also be applied elsewhere. The only building form standard in DO10 relates to pedestrian access on the primary or side street and requires an unenclosed porch with a minimum depth of six feet and a minimum area of 48 square feet. Front porches are already prevalent in the neighborhood, and this standard is intended to continue this tradition. With regard to landscaping standards, the overlay increases the required percentage of live planting material in the area of budding the primary street from 50% to 60%, while 40% of other open areas would be landscaped with either live or non-live landscaping material. The overlay also requires a minimum of one tree for each dwelling unit within the primary or side street setback or in the adjacent street right-of-way. Existing trees can count towards this requirement, and the city forester can determine that a new private tree would not be required if it would conflict with existing or proposed public trees. Finally, the overlay requires two outdoor light fixtures for each dwelling unit intended to illuminate the primary or side-street setback area as well as the rear setback area. And that's it for an overview of these overlays. Thanks for the opportunity to introduce them. We will release a public review draft soon and will conduct a second internal review to ensure the overlays follow existing zoning code protocols and can be administered clearly. We'll also map the draft amendment and identifying where the Cherry Creek East overlays will apply, and once that text amendment is finalized, we'll come back to you all for a public hearing before taking it to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have some discussion. What questions do we have, Ignacio?
Yeah, thank you, Libby. Really nice. Slide number 12. If you can share it again.
Sure.
You have the sample of the two building envelopes with the simulation of the setbacks and the two scenarios. It looks to me the one on the right-hand side is, has less volume than the one on the left. Is intention that, or because developers will try to get all the volume that they can get, right?
Right. No, we modeled the various scenarios that could be achieved through kind of a combination of the different standards, including the base standards, which encourage the ground level and upper story setbacks, and compared those to the resulting gross square footage that you would get if you built under the private open space alternatives. And ultimately, we found like very, very small percentage difference, like less than 5%, which I know can add up, but I think in some of our scenarios, it was even like 1% or 3%. So we do feel like these are, these are pretty well-calibrated to either have developers pursue the base standards or to give them some flexibility in pursuing the private open space alternatives.
Okay, and talking about calipers, the tree law or the landscape requirements increased to 60%. That's good, but what wasn't clear to me is you're not, this landscape requirements are not within the right of way, right?
Or are they? This is on the lot itself.
Okay.
So within the private zone lot, yep.
Alright, good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. The Qs I have it is Angel, Fred, Heidi, and Gosia. Angel.
Thank you. I'm new to this stuff, and I'm just curious how you decide the specifics of these design overlays for a specific community, how much of it is functional versus aesthetic in terms of determining for, you know, east Cherry Creek, what these setbacks are, these different parameters.
This process really started on the initiative of the Cherry Creek East Neighborhood Association, and they hired a couple of Richard Farley and Ellen Idelson, who are actually former employers or employees of CPD. So they really worked closely with the Neighborhood Association to identify what, what streetscape qualities they wanted to achieve and really improving the pedestrian space in the commercial context anyways, and opening it up to more daylight, just creating more meaningful private open space as well and more interesting building design. And so they had a lot of back and forth in crafting these standards and then did a lot of outreach with the community as well, including developers, to, to make sure that there was support for these and that they weren't too onerous in taking away development rights from folks. And so we got involved in the process a couple of years ago, and then have really kind of had to adjust some of the proposed standards so that they meet some of our existing zoning protocols in how we format our standards, how we define our standards and measure them, and making sure that they're consistent with other sections within the code.
Mm-hmm. And do you have in mind other areas of the city where this may be applied as well when you're looking at these? Or is it really strictly for this community?
I don't have any other areas in my mind off the bat. But when staff was reviewing these, they felt that it could be applicable to other areas. And so we wanted to get away from naming these overlays with a geographic reference, like the Rhino Design Overlay or the Sloane's Lake Neighborhood Conservation Overlay, because then it really confuses folks when they do want to apply it to somewhere else. So, and these titles are quite the mouthful right now. We might try to find something a little snappier, but, but for now, they are descriptive of what they're trying to achieve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks. I just had a couple of quickie questions. One, can you give us more details on what's required when you talk about making parking floors adaptable?
Yeah. Um, so this is something that's really new for us and exciting. Kind of looking back at Ignacio's earlier question on sort of trade-offs, what we've found within the Rhino Design Overlay, which requires that parking facades be integrated into the building design as opposed to having active uses on those floors, we found that they typically just choose to integrate the design into the building facade. And so we've added onto that the standard to make those floors adaptable so that the base standard is kind of more on par with the alternative. And this isn't something that a lot of other cities have done, or if they have started to write it into their codes, they haven't really vetted whether or not it's working. But we, we did our research and along with the recommendations of the consultant team, we've established some parameters that define those adaptable floors. And so some of those include having the floors be generally level, making sure that that adaptive use is at least 30 feet deep, and then defining the floor-to-floor height as a minimum of 11 feet high, maybe 12 feet.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, I love the idea, and I, I have talked to some developers who sought to do that to a certain extent. I hope you guys are also talking to your colleagues on the building department side and fireside just to see what else needs to be done. It'd be a shame if we did this and missed something and they weren't really adaptable because they went to the building department and the building department said, wow, now. A comment about landscape materials and landscaping materials, and that is, I do hope that we will consider at some point, and I'm not sure where this should live, but it certainly could live in the zoning code, requiring some of this landscaping to be more water-wise. I think, you know, it's great to talk about this from an appearance standpoint, and I'm guessing in Cherry Creek, that means that we're going to have lots of green lawns soaking up lots of water. It should be nice to talk about it and talk about the sustainability issues and try to incorporate that into our code at some point. Just a comment. And I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the idea of the outdoor light fixtures and where that goes. You know, people are going to just put up floodlights in the alleyway and light their neighbors up too and all of that. And requiring that, I'm just a little bit, I hope that gets kind of tuned in and narrowed in a little bit. I just, there's some openness there that makes me a little nervous. That's all. Thanks.
No, on the lighting issue, Fred, we've certainly heard some concern even from staff that requiring lighting fixtures maybe shouldn't be a function of zoning, but this is important to the community, and there's already some other standards within our Article 10 that address kind of all our landscaping standards and lighting standards. And so per that article, light, light cannot shine onto like your neighbor's property or really off your zone lots.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as you know, you do an SDP and you have to show that, you know, the candle, foot candles are below a certain level and that they don't go, you know, and so it's, it's not a very simple thing. And I, I guess I worry that people are going to see that and say, well, I'm going to Home Depot. I'm going to buy that floodlight there, and that'll do it in the alleyway. And, you know, it just doesn't, it's not a great path. And I'm also not totally convinced that it should be the responsibility of private landowners to light the sidewalks and the alleys. That's a whole nother question, so.
And it wouldn't be lighting anything off of their zone lot. It would just be like the areas within their setbacks.
So they
Just to clarify.
Like, so they have to light their backyard. I mean, you know, again, it's like, I don't really want to light my backyard. So anyway, it's just, it strikes me that we're starting to get a little intrusive there, but thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi.
Thank you, Joel. Libby, can I get you to put that slide back up on the residential architectural overlay that is the landscaping slide?
Of course.
Thank you. So when we talk about residential design overlays, there's a couple of things that I'm really sensitive to. The first is that we have a housing crisis. And so if we're looking at increasing the amount of open space, there's a trade-off to that for decreasing the amount of footprint that can occur in the house for decreasing bedroom counts when we do that. And so I might, what I would want to see is, how does this 60% compare to the rest of the city? Like, I used to know what the statistic was a long time ago of what open space typically was on Denver lots. I know when we redeveloped Denver's former airport, we, we worked to reduce that to think about affordable housing, but also about how we use our natural resources, because less housing on more land doesn't make sense from a climate change standpoint. And from that climate stance standpoint, what I worry about with this is the non-live landscaping material. When we use that term, non-live landscaping materials, we're going to, we're going to decrease the bedroom count, so we're going to increase the open space. So we're going to have less housing and we're going to have, have more area that Fred was hitting on, we have a water crisis. It's a part of our climate crisis. Well, it's great to use, we absolutely need to be using materials that use less water. But when we start to talk about non-live landscaping material, what that is in my mind is artificial turf, which is backed by rubber. And we all seem to be looking towards artificial turf as the solution to not using water and climate change. But what I don't understand is, how is that impacting the heat we're creating on the street? Is that impacting, actually driving climate change by warming air? So I just, I have a lot of concerns about this. It makes me pretty nervous that it's not a beneficial thing to our city overall, and I would want to see more in-depth information on those issues that I just raised.
A couple clarifying points, Heidi. I appreciate what you said. Just wanted to note that this isn't affecting the percentages of building coverage versus open space on a zone lot. This just requires that of those open areas, that 60% has to be live planting material and 40% would be non-live planting material. So this doesn't affect the size of the building footprint at all.
Okay, so I, so it's just, it was 50%, 50 and 50 before, and it split to 60, 40.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, good. That, that assuages that concern in that I misread that. So thank you for that.
But I still hear you. Yep, I still hear you regarding the non-live landscaping material, and we've gotten through our staff reviews, we've gotten some comments related to the landscaping standards. And this base standard comes out of Article 10, where all of our landscaping standards are. So we took that exact same language and just tweaked the percentages. But through this review, we're hearing from some other folks that we do need to kind of change our underlying landscaping standards to be more water-wise and less climate impactful. So that's been a common refrain that we've heard.
Thanks for hearing me, Libby. I appreciate you.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's helpful.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Libby, for the presentation, and thank you for all the work that went into these guidelines. I have some background of both conversations with the community and the cities staff and the consultants. So I know there was a lot of, it's been a long process. But I kind of want to continue be the voice of caution in this conversation, building on Heidi's comments. Starting with equity, who gets the design guidelines or design overlay? Really, you said that this is a unique scenario because the community has resources to hire a consultant, also has a local know-how about how to advocate for themselves. So, so there's a question of, again, who, who gets this special attention? What community, what neighborhood gets a design overlay versus doesn't get a design overlay? The second question is why? Why is there a desire to create an overlay? And to that point, I would say to make development more costly, I think. So there's no, there's no objective criteria that says that five-foot setback makes a better design than no setback, or a step back at third floor or fifth floor makes a better design. But it does make design more expensive because when the structural walls don't align in a vertical plane and we start stepping them back, that, that makes construction significantly more expensive. I'm working on affordable housing project right now, and we're struggling with that very issue that it's a significant cost increase. And also, there are opinions that that layer cake design caused by these setbacks is not necessarily better designed. So again, it makes it more expensive, not necessarily better. So, so that's, that's to the why of, of maybe making development less attainable in certain communities. And my last point is about design versus zoning, because we're using zoning to try to control design. And zoning is really not a design tool. Zoning is an entitlement tool. So when we say that somehow by creating, applying different zoning restrictions, we're going to create better design, I am not convinced that that's the case. I think there are design tools, design guidelines and such. We are, I think, in Denver intentionally straying away from them, and I think that's, that's the right approach. But I also, I'm not convinced that using zoning to produce design outcomes is the right direction. So I would welcome your response, but these are my concerns.
No, I appreciate all of your comments. As far as the equity issues, I think that's something that we need to consider. I'm getting the equity issues. I think that's something that we need to consider on a broader. Kind of a broader conversation to have, because I think the two are right, that there are some communities that are capable of speaking on their behalf better than others and advocating for tools that influence design. And we're sensitive to that. And I think this addresses that partly by trying to broaden itself and, and not just be Cherry Creek specific, so that if there was another neighborhood that was interested in doing something like this and they wanted to just grab one of these tools and go for rezoning, they won't have to spend the years that the Cherry Creek folks have spent on developing these. So hopefully they will be tools that are, are more broadly applicable to other neighborhoods. As far as the design overlays and whether or not, not kind of design belongs in our zoning code. We do have a hybrid land use and form-based zoning code. And so these design standards already exist within the underlying zone district. And these go to just kind of tweak them or enhance them in ways that achieve particular objectives. As far as the cost implications to development, the consultants on the overlays are architects, urban design professionals themselves, who have, have worked with us to make sure that the intent of their standards are maintained and that we're, we're working within increments that doesn't have major cost implications on the buildings. So we're trying to be cognizant of that as well and not just picking a number out of nowhere that doesn't actually relate to the building's frame.
Okay, thank you, Jordan.
Thanks. I could be fairly brief as a lot of what I was going to say was said before, especially by Gosha previously. I, I do agree with the overall sentiment that. The idea of the zero to five setback, the step backs on upper levels, it's, it's not proven, it's not guaranteed to provide better design. Especially when, you know, with the DO nine. Where private open spaces is something that you can use to, to get the zero setback. Is private open space really going to necessarily improve the quality of the public realm? I think that's, you know, kind of a, and I thought, I don't know that I necessarily believe that it's the case. And kind of building on. What Gosha said and the kind of the little discussion you had there at the end. If, you know, related to the kind of the equity piece of that. If this were the right tool, if it did meet all the needs and it really, and sole outcome or its primary outcome. And the thing it did was to create a better public realm, more pedestrian oriented public realm. And that it is a, a tool that can be applied to other districts with simpler, you know, needs that might not have the, the wherewithal to, to do it themselves. Why isn't this just being proposed as a tool, kind of blanketing all those areas as opposed to this one very hyper-specific area? In Cherry Creek, you know, Cherry Creek put up the, the money, I guess, and the effort. But then I mean that they should get to own it if it's a city policy, right? So I think that that's just a concern. I, I, I do think the intent is good. I think that there, you know, that, that district from my personal experience is not one that I spend a lot of time walking around in. Primarily because I don't know anyone that lives there, but, you know, there's also not, it's not an area that attracts me in any way. It's a block and a half from my parents' house, so theoretically I could go there, just don't. So I, I get the intent, I get the ideas behind it. I just, you know, to me, I don't know that I believe that is producing a better outcome at the end of the day. Since most of the, the sort of incentives or the, the improvements are meant for the people who live in the building anyway. Is it really substantive change for the people who don't? Maybe, maybe not, but I, I just don't, I'm not convinced of it. I do want to, I, I agree with Fred on the light fixture clause. It seemed very hyper-specific to me, sort of weirdly so. And also I don't know if this was in there, but it was, there's a, it was a provision for creating or adding light fixtures to the design in those specific areas. Is there a provision for keeping them on? Is there a way, you know, you have the light? Do they have to keep it running the whole time to, to me, you know, what is, you could have a light bulb and never turn it on. I don't know what the intent or how you actually police that. Oh, I, I'm just sort of going here. I'll stop there, but that's what I thought.
So to start with the last point, the, the drafters did initially want there to be like motion sensors or timers that were to require the lights to be on throughout the night. And this was something that the city didn't feel like it could enforce. You know, if somebody calls the city and says, hey, it's four AM and my neighbor doesn't have their light on. Can we really send somebody out there to inspect that? And what's the outcome? Councilman Heinz had also said that he has heard from many of his constituents that they're concerned about light pollution. And so folks don't necessarily want a mandate that requires people to have their lights on all night long. In addition, that's really energy inefficient, right? So for a lot of different reasons, we pulled back on requiring that the lights be on. But we do feel like it's, it's easy enough to put them on a plan and respect the neighborhood's wishes on that. But I think it's still an ongoing conversation and we did expect at least a couple of you to bring it up. So we appreciate your concern with that. In regards to kind of why design overlays in some areas, not others. If, if those, if that tool really proves to enhance the public realm, then why not just require those standards everywhere? And I think that's, that's a conversation that we're beginning to have internally as well as whether or not our underlying zoning districts should be tweaked so that there's just that, that equitable advantage available to everybody.
Thank you, and Joel.
Thanks, Joel. I know you had your hand up first. I, I, the more I'm hearing, the more it does make me question a couple of things. The, the first, you said something, Libby, about that these overlays are created with specific goals in mind. And I'm just curious, who, where is the criteria or goal, where are they derived from? Who determines the goals? That these are.
The Cherry Creek East neighborhood, when they, they wanted to pursue, initially they wanted to pursue urban design.
I can't hear.
In guidelines. And that wasn't something, and so we guided them towards design overlays as a tool. And they, they developed their own kind of goals and intense statements for. Creating these two. And then we've since scored previous overlays that exist in the Denver zoning code today.
Okay, so I, I also wonder, you know.
And you're all frozen?
Can you all hear me? Do you see me? You're all frozen. Maybe I'll cut my video for a second and see if that helps.
Yeah, good, good idea, Libby. I think you've been kind of having what looks on our side like bandwidth issues off and on. So yeah, give that, thank you for giving that a try.
I thought that it was my, but thank you for that. The other thing, it, it does speak to equity when I think of how the, the planning folks are so stretched. And how many priorities they, there are. I know that this, this one, I took two years to get to this point, but how, how do you prioritize something like this? You know, in, in comparison to some of the other needs of communities? Libby.
Yeah, um, and I know we have Abe on here too. And I wonder if he could talk more generally about kind of how we evaluate all the desires to implement within our regulatory work program and how some things end up getting prioritized over others.
I don't see Abe.
Abe had been here. And he appears to not be here.
Did he pop off? But, but basically there's, I mean, we've got a long list of desires that we would love to put into our annual work program that help us implement our plans. And it's just kind of every year reprioritizing sort of where we can expend staff and get the biggest bang for our buck, basically. I mean, that's, that's kind of the shorthand of it. I've only been here for a couple of years. So that's why I was hoping Abe, Abe could kind of give you more of the institutional knowledge on how that process goes. But it is something that we definitely carefully consider and constantly evaluate to figure out how we can help the most people.
Yeah, it looks like Abe has rejoined. Abe, you probably got the gist of that question. It was just the, kind of from an equity perspective, how the work plan is, is set regarding staff time spent on overlays such as these.
And thanks, Joel. March with Community Planning and Development. Sorry, my internet's probably not very good. So make a face if you can't hear me and I'll keep video off. Regarding the equity considerations in the work program, we're certainly prioritizing the big moves coming out of adopted plans like Blueprint Denver. In terms of our own resources, we, you know, we have several things on the wish list in terms of doing better to have the right design tools for places like Cherry Creek East and other centers and corridors across the city. That's a big recommendation from Blueprint Denver. And I'm sort of personally hoping we can launch a project within the next year or two to like, look at all of that citywide. And, and, you know, looking at those bigger moves is really important for all the reasons you've been talking about. Because we want to make sure that everyone has access to the, the results that can come out of our, our plans. In the meantime though, you know, we do have this mechanism whereby an individual neighborhood, you know, you have two today can go through a process, have a conversation and kind of pilot some of the things that, you know, will ultimately be part of a citywide conversation.
I, I hear you. I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there. I just wonder when we talk and, and we, we have these strategic conversations, the ideas of legislative sort of overhaul, not overhaul, but planning comes up. And I, I just wonder where, where, you know, where that fits in, in discussions at the planning. But that's probably one of our retreat topics. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask a couple and then I see Jordan has your hand up again. First. Let me, let me focus on the idea of these being reusable. That, to do that well, I imagine takes a lot of work to test these on properties and, you know, hypothetical sites. And, and existing sites that aren't in the area. So while you have a lot of people at the table from Cherry Creek East, if you want to name the overlay something generic with the aspiration that it can be used in more places, how much time is really being spent testing assumptions here that may or may not be true elsewhere? But were the kinds of places you thought this might be used for when you selected generic names for them?
I, I appreciate that commentary on this. This was a very recent evolution with the overlays in something that we haven't tested yet. And so I think if we are going to be serious about whether or not these could be applicable elsewhere, then we should consider what neighborhoods they might be, might be applicable to. And whether or not there's a couple of tweaks that would make them, that would give them a broader appeal.
Yeah, you know, nothing in this just brief PowerPoint level presentation has triggered any thoughts for me about, oh, well, that wouldn't work in some other area I'm more familiar with. But that did happen with the bungalow overlay in Northwest Denver. That seemed to me to be quite specific to that neighborhood and speaking to exactly how big porches should be and exactly how elevated the building should be. Not remembering the specifics in great detail, but those kinds of things that are probably not true everywhere that there's bungalows. But we, we aspirationally chose to name it the bungalow overlay of the idea that it might be used a lot more places. So those two were intention and I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agreed that the names generality matched how it was really tested, but it came from one area. So I have the same question here in general. I'll, I'll start with the, the larger buildings overlay. Taking inspiration from DO seven and, and Rhino. That wasn't just upper story setbacks. That was like upper story mass reduction. One of their, one of their real goals in the art, Rhino Art District was maintaining flexibility for architects to do creative things at the top of their building that were not just, you know, goes up five stories, steps back 10 feet, you know, but wanting to encourage creativity and flexibility. So they called it mass reduction. It, it seems like you're not, not taking that approach. But again, one, I'm not an architect. Two, I've only seen a PowerPoint level of understanding of your, your direction here. How does this compare and contrast to Rhino?
And sorry if I blew through the standards too, and there was some confusion in there. But the only piece that we're borrowing from Rhino is related to the limitation on visible parking above the ground level. And so it's not meant for like shaping the building and doing the mass reduction things that Rhino was trying to do to achieve more interesting buildings. It was the only piece we borrowed from that was really to try to hide structured parking. And through either the integrated facade design that's already built into Rhino. Well, it's actually, you have to do that. And then you also have to make sure that the parking structure floors are adaptable for at least a certain depth to encourage future conversion from parking to residential or commercial uses.
Okay, there are upper story setbacks if you take the alternative that doesn't have the private, publicly accessible private open space, right?
Correct.
There's a lot of new high-rise, very attractive buildings in, in Cherry Creek. How, how do those fare in these new, with these new regulations? Could they have been built or would they need? Again, what I worry about is kind of a prescriptive setback that, that ends up looking kind of forced when an architect may have come up with a beautiful building, like ones that have been built recently. That'd be not possible in these regulations. Are, are you testing that great collection of buildings you have right on hand?
You're talking about like the newer development along Steel?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep. We, we have done a fair amount of testing, but I hear you there. And I think that we could probably go back and make sure that these wouldn't be constraining folks to the extent that you wouldn't get good design outcomes that we haven't getting in the most recent years.
Okay, and we had this discussion with the Rappahoe Square. You know, how prescriptive should a simple step back be? Abe was on that project. I see he's back on. And then the discussion in a different way came up in Rhino and, and just, yes, you want to give light and air to the street. But you also want good design. So I'm glad they're architecturally minded people in here. I'm just curious where that's falling. Abe, did you care to say anything? Cause you popped up on my screen as I was speaking.
Sir, sorry, my connection is so bad that it'd be in a new place shortly. Hopefully we'll have a better connection. So I missed some of the conversation, but really I think it was about the difference between the flexibility of the incremental mass reduction tool versus upper story setback. Similar intentions behind both tools. The Rhino conversation was very much around, we want to make sure that there can, really interesting things could happen. Like it can be expressed to the hole through the building or something like that. I think that just, that wasn't the conversation in Cherry Creek East. It was more just about basic access to light and air and bringing the scale of larger buildings down into a more like broken down a little bit, so they're not just large boxes and have a more human scale. And because of that, the upper story setback tool is simply, is much simpler and easier to understand and more straightforward. And so that's, I think, why they went with that proposal over the incremental mass reduction that is used in River North.
Okay, I'll, I'll just be looking to, you know, explain it to me like I'm five. Examples of how, how good recent buildings could or couldn't be done with these new proposals when this comes back. Then, then switching to the low-scale residential. The. We talked about lighting. Let me just be clear. You're, you're using language very carefully, Libby. It's lighting. we talked about lighting. Let me just be clear. You're using language very carefully, Libby. It's lighting the setback. And of course, in my mind and perhaps others, that means the walk up to this up to the house or something. But is it or could it be as simple as the light by the by the front door?
Yeah, and I've I think that's kind of where we started and there was some confusion about how to administer that, like exactly where by the front door does it need to be? And so we we changed it to say you have to illuminate the setback area. And then within the last few days, I wondered if that's not too extensive as well. And we need to just go back if we're going to keep the lighting standard and go back and just be more specific about where the fixture should be as opposed to what area it should be illuminating. So I appreciate that comment, and I think that's something that we'll probably have to revisit as well.
Yeah, that's that's very designer-y to want to illuminate your path and that some people want to and some people don't. And if we're talking about one alternative or one way of meeting it is the light by the front door that essentially everybody has, then I'd encourage clarity that 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 can be all that it is. And then finally, this is a broader question. Libby, you talked about Cherry Creek East was looking at design review. And in the course of discussion, some of those things got encouraged to be in a zoning overlay instead. Is there somebody, whether it's you or somebody else on the call, who could just give us a brief regulatory history of Cherry Creek? In in other contexts, I've heard, well, Cherry Creek has a design review committee and things have to go through them years ago. And then I heard, well, the city isn't honoring that anymore. It's just advisory. But now there is a design review committee. And now there's these additional layers. Can somebody just bring us up to date on what the regulatory environment is with regard to required design review and advisory design review in in this area?
There is. I know there's like design review standards for Cherry Creek North and a committee that evaluates development against standards, but there used to be some design standards and guidelines for Cherry Creek East. And then several years ago, I guess there was like a dispute as to whether or not they'd ever been adopted. And so the city wasn't going to continue to apply those to development proposals. And Cherry Creek East was interested in updating those or somehow getting them approved and applied and and we we encouraged an overlay, which is just usually a lot easier to administer since it's building off of zoning code standards that already exist and are much more objective, whereas design review just takes a lot more time to go through and is a lot of more subjective kind of back and forth. Not as measurable. So the the overlay tools are easier for us to administer. But Abe, I don't know if you're in a clearer spot where if you want to add anything more about kind of that background.
I I I think that was enough for me to understand in in general. So there aren't there aren't city approved, city enforced, design standards and guidelines in Cherry Creek East right now.
No, so it's not like we would have underlying zoning, the design overlay and design standard and guidelines. No, there are no design standards and guidelines.
Okay, thanks. Well, my my hope is that everyone working together on this for so long gets to the point where all the PUDs we see on that map are are no longer the standard every time something's built. Heidi.
Thank you, Joel. I just wanted to pick back up on a topic you had brought up about the bungalow overlay in Northwest Denver and the portability of this of the residential code or the residential overlay that we're looking at here. Going back to that bungalow overlay district, one of the reasons that I had voted no for it was the concern on the requirement for the front porch because the existing homes in that neighborhood, there was a pretty even split of front porch versus stoop. And Denver does have a very strong historic precedent for using types styles of architecture that utilizes stoop. So whether it's Italian eight or whether it's a colonial with a front stoop, even the one-story four, I guess it'd be a two-square, has a lot of of stoop to it. So to require a six-foot deep forty-eight square foot front porch becomes very architectural, becomes very stylistic in an architectural style. And quickly to me becomes inappropriate for wide-scale use across the city. Thank you.
So it might be a factor that argues against the general applicability. This might might be a Cherry Creek East thing, perhaps. Ignacio.
Thank you. So just a couple of final comments from from my side here. The I I think that that's slide twelve for nine in our package. The the graphic needs to improve in order to convey really the idea of what can you do with the volume because I mean, what Joel was talking about, the the ability to to be creative is there. But, you know, these are typically residential buildings, no more than 12 stories. According to the zoning, eight and 12. So you have, these are, you know, not tall buildings that you have a lot of height to play with. So I think those two graphics are really key for the for the code. A comment on the floor-to-floor height on the parking convertible to residential. I think 11 is too shallow, especially when you start putting utilities under this slab and so on. I would recommend 13 feet is is an optimal, maybe even in some cases 15 feet to allow for utilities, forced, circulation and mechanical and all that stuff. Yeah, 11 is is could be could be not not enough. And then on the DO 10, you know, the the lighting, obviously you're responding to the needs or the desires of the community. So that is that is an issue that that was brought up and so on. It is. It is weird to me. What we typically do is for large sites, we do a minimum, maximum food candle or an average food candle for the site and so on. You cannot do that with residential. So I would actually not even not even deal with it. Why putting it in zoning? But you are responding to something that the community wants. So good luck with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely appreciate this pre-briefing. It's be coming back to us as it as it works its way through the process. And I hope the the conversation was useful to you and your team. Thank you. Thanks to the members of the public who were here watching. We're gonna move to the final item on our agenda, also an information item, also regarding an overlay. And just bringing up my PDF viewer here, it went away. Yeah, we have Brad Johnson presenting on the Sunnyside overlay. Welcome, Brad.
Thanks, Joel. Go through the routine here. Struggling here a little bit. Give me a moment. Are you able to see that?
Yes. When you put it into presentation mode, it looks right. Thank you.
It got big? Filled up the screen?
It's all good. Thank you.
All right, cool. All right. Hi, everyone. Brad Johnson, Senior City Planner and Urban Designer with CPD, presenting to you today an information item on Sunnyside Conservation Overlay. So this is a slightly different flavor of overlay than than the design overlay that you just heard about. And this is a conservation overlay that's been in the works for many, many years. This would be a text amendment to create the overlay and a map amendment to apply it throughout some or all of the Sunnyside neighborhood that would be sponsored by Councilwoman Sandoval. And at the highest level of trying to describe the intent is that a conservation overlay is typically used to try to kind of right-size the zoning with a little more surgical approach than the citywide zoning update did in 2010. To tailor the standards to some degree, design standards to respond more specifically to neighborhood patterns in a in a specific neighborhood, of course, in this case, Sunnyside. So just a reminder, the geography here between Federal I-70, INCA, and Thirty-Eighth Avenue up in District One. And here's a zoom-in map on that Sunnyside neighborhood, that same geography. And what you see in pink are single-unit zone properties and in blue are two-unit zone properties that would allow for duplex. And those are the two-zone districts within the Sunnyside neighborhood that have been discussed for potential application of this overlay. There are other non-non-colored parcels in here that are zone commercial or other mixed-use districts and such that have not been included in the discussion. And if you can imagine this overlay potentially being applied to the entirety of of properties that are zoned single and two-unit within Sunnyside, it'd be north of of 3,000 properties, as you see in the little bit of data down there at the bottom right. And so Libby touched on this, but I just want to, just in case we have new folks joining, I want to reiterate this. So the idea of an overlay is is that there there are base zone districts that apply through throughout our city. The majority of this area are the are all the single unit and two-unit properties in in Sunnyside are you some flavor of urban two-unit or urban single unit. We see that zone district used through all areas of the city, many areas of the city. And so the overlay provides an opportunity for council members, neighbors, residents to come together and talk about options for how the that sort of broader more broadly applied zone district could be tweaked to be more tailored to the conditions on the ground in a certain neighborhood. And so they can add new design standards, they can modify existing design standard, but but as Libby pointed out, they cannot change the types of uses that would be allowed in a given zone district. So for example, here again, we have you two-unit and single-unit district. You could not use a conservation overlay to say that only single-unit buildings will be allowed, our single-unit uses will be allowed in a in a two-unit zoned area of the city or vice versa. Just want to point out some blueprint guidance. So when we look into that document, there's specific language here on the screen that that advocates for the use of this tool in areas that have distinctive feature or distinctive neighborhood patterns. We have also criteria in the zoning code that says before we apply a conservation overlay to an area, we we need to to meet the criteria, the area needs to have a consistent set of of characteristics that are that the the overlay provisions are responsive to. So if you spend some time, I'm sure many of you have spent time in in Sunnyside. And and I've gotten been fortunate enough to spend some time out there recently as part of this work. And as you go throughout the neighborhood from east to west, I think you will see that there's actually a lot of variety out there. You're gonna see single-unit houses, you can see duplexes, you see a mix of kind of smaller multi-unit properties mixed in like this picture on the top left. You're only seeing two doors there, but I think there are maybe four on this building, if I recall correctly. So there's a lot of variety, but within that variety, there's a lot of consistency, right? And so if you look at the kind of traditional buildings, let's say buildings that were constructed, you know, nineteen kind of mid-century stuff and before, which is most of it out there, the original properties, you're gonna see a lot of one-to-two-story buildings. Typically, you're gonna see pitched roof. There are some some exceptions to that in older buildings. Most of the footprints are fairly narrow and modest in size overall. You will see a first-story element, whether it's a stoop or a porch, on the majority of the buildings out in in Sunnyside. I think porches are far and away probably the most common type, but certainly there are stoops and other types of kind of first-story elements out there. Many of them project from the front wall of a building. You will will see also the first floor or the street-level story to use, you know, kind of more zoning terminology is typically raised off of the adjacent grade. Again, looking at the the picture on the left here, you see that in in action. And then in terms of building materials, again, a variety to be sure, but the most common material you'll see throughout the neighborhood, and I think the numbers bear this out, is brick cladding. And so I mentioned the neighborhood council district has been working on this for many, many years. This work was going on even before Councilwoman Sandoval came into office. So back when Councilman Espinoza was the council rep up there. And this is one, some of the analysis, I think, that the neighborhood and council district worked on. So you are seeing here kind of in the middle, a lot of what we're seeing, particularly in the two-unit zoned areas, which is a building that is built to maximize the bulk plane. And so here you see a two-unit duplex building with that third story sort of setback from the edges to get within the heights of the bulk plane and those angles there. And then to the left, you see a couple of building forms that are out there in the neighborhood for sure, but perhaps are a little less prevalent. And then to the right, I think you see more of the typical traditional form that you would see up there. And so from all this analysis and discussion that the neighbors have have undertaken and in coordination with the council district and also with us, that analysis led to and discussion led to a series of design standards that are in in kind of draft form right now. We've got an internal draft that we're working on with the council and the neighborhood working group. And these are kind of some components of the draft intent statements. So again, speaking to the kind of trying to push on the key elements, so not the whole laundry list of everything that might be done in a conservation overlay, but the kind of fundamental for the most part, massing and scale elements and trying to push for a more context-sensitive outcomes through those elements. So now I'll walk through the specific elements and you guys will probably recognize a lot of these from the bungalow overlay. Many of them were were taken from that or even previous overlays or elements of our zoning code that were modified for this, or some of them came over just as they are in the bungalow overlay. So starting in the kind of scale and massing category, we look this, we look at the draft zoning overlay that we're considering here. It would reduce the building height in feet for sloped roof structures from 30 to 35. You can get 35 if you have a wider lot down to 30. So just a flat cap of 30 regardless of the width of the lot. So it's a pretty incremental change there, a little more significant change for low-slope roofs, which are you can see defined there down based on a 312 pitch, but it's basically a flat roof or an almost flat low-low pitched roof from 30 to 35 feet down to 22 feet. Again, from a similar approach to what you saw in bungalow, the upper surface of the floor of that street level requiring a minimum of 12 inches above the base plane or roughly above grade around the around the front of the building to a maximum of 36 inches, but putting in some flexibility into the zoning language so that DODI could potentially respond to issues related to flooding or whatever else might come up on a case-by-case basis. So this kind of photo on the far right that shows the building kind of right on the grade would not be allowed without that exception from from DODI under this overlay. And that's to try and keep that kind of key character defining feature of that raised first floor and front porch in new development that might come on board. Continuing on scale and massing, we've got a bulk plane adjustment, which is to reduce the vertical height at side zone lot line to 14 from 17. So guys will remember, I'm hoping you can see my mouse. The bulk plane is essentially the the envelope in which a building can be built. And part of what defines that envelope is a vertical line that comes up from the side zone lot line. And then from that, the top of that imaginary line, it goes up at a 45 degree angle to the top of the bulk plane. So right now, the distance of this line before it takes that kink up at 45 degrees is 17. So this would be an incremental reduction down to 14. It would accept dormers that meet certain criteria, so they could pierce this bulk playing area if they are of a certain size and setback from the front wall and other kind of criteria like that. Again, something else that came over from from bungalow would be a max on square footage of 3,000 square feet for a lot 7,500 square feet or less, and then allowing for additional flexibility for larger lots, which there are certainly some out here. The intent is that that square footage cap of 3,000 would only apply to the primary structure, would only apply to above grade floor areas, so not to a basement, for example. And would only apply to the urban house building form. So this type of square footage cap would would not, as currently drafted, apply to a duplex form or a tandem house form. I mentioned the prevalence of kind of first story elements or or front porches that you see out in the neighborhoods. So this overlay would, as it's conceived, put in a front porch requirement that would have requirements for size, terms of area depth, that as some was mentioned in the previous item, and then some other criteria for design that also comes along over from the bungalow overlay. I will note that this square footage requirement of 90, that's kind of, that's the current number, maybe it could be a little bit lower or higher, but that's the one we we're working with right now, is lower than what was in the bungalow overlay. And then I think this is the last one, building materials. So I mentioned the prevalence of brick out in the neighborhood. The this has been a much discussed topic in the neighborhood. This is a little bit new for Denver. This is not something that was included in the bungalow overlay, but the concept of this requirement would be that for certain elevations of a building that they would require minimum minimum percentage of those elevations or exterior walls of an elevation to be of brick cladding. And the intent behind this also is to focus on walls that are most visible from the street. And so try to describe this a little bit. So street facing walls and sidewalls are the types of walls that this would would, this brick requirement would apply to, it would only apply to the front 65% of the zone lot, it would only apply to the primary structure. And the concept is that would only apply to new development. So if you wanted to do an addition above your first floor or rear addition or anything like that, it would not, this requirement would not kick in. Looking at this diagram just for a minute, so this is all a plan plan view diagram. Here's the primary street, here's the side street and alley up at the top of this diagram. And I want to start with, I'll I'll start here with just the very simple kind of rectangle tangle shape, and these are percentages of of requirement of brick cladding that would potentially be applied through this overlay to these different wall types. So the 60 is saying that 60% of the exterior surface of a street facing wall, whether it's, sorry, must be clad with brick. And that a sidewall like this one or this one over here could be a reduced percentage down to 40%. And that of truly rear facing walls, such as this one here, would have no brick requirement at all. And then I, we can come back to this, but there's some nuance, obviously, you know, it's easier to explain in the perfect rectangle. But we have to think through in drafting a a rule like this, how it would apply to non rectangular shaped buildings or buildings with with shifts in the massing and offsets and things like that. So that's what that's trying to to demonstrate to the left and right of the middle. And so with that, I'll leave this this on the screen for a moment, but I know either Councilwoman Sandoval or Naomi Grundens from her office is here. And I think would would like to say a few words before we get into discussion questions.
Absolutely. Welcome, Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you, planning board members for taking time out of your day for this really important conversation. One key point regarding the overlay is what we have been talking about in Sunnyside is this proposal will create modest but meaningful change in the massing and the appearance of new development. And that key theme of creating modest but meaningful change in the massing and the parents of new development has been key to what we've been talking about in Northwest Denver. I think it was really important on the last overlay of why do we have these overlays? What is the point of the overlays? And the point of our overlays is is Denver has a form based and design hybrid. It's not just form based, it's a hybrid type of zoning code that we have. And since 2010, there has not been any updates to any of the TU zone districts or the single family zone districts. And in Sunnyside, as redevelopment has occurred, we've seen it rapid in the TU zone districts. And so that is what the intent of the overlay is modest changes to the built environment. And we have taken a lot of these solutions, what we're calling them, from the bungalow overlay, but they all started, a lot of them started with the Potter Highland Conservation Overlay in Potter Highland. And that is in a two unit zone district and passed in 2015, which I worked on with Councilwoman Montero. Another key point that I'd like just to talk about is besides the outreach that my office has done with the help of Naomi and the Sunnyside Working Group through their planning and community development, is we're also in the Near Northwest Neighborhood Plan. And the first reports from that Near Northwest Neighborhood Plan have come out and they're online. And if after this briefing, if you would, so if you would take a moment to read some of those reports that are online for the Near Northwest Neighborhood Plan, the NPI, it also sets the stage for this conference for this overlay overlay. And in Sunnyside, we have modest homes that are being taken and bought and being redeveloped and being maxed out. And we are no longer able to keep affordable housing in Northwest Denver. In one of the reports from the Near Northwest Plan, it talks about the fact that the city and county of Denver doesn't track naturally occurring affordable housing. And what it talks about is that because there are typically cheaper to to buy these naturally occurring affordable housing, the forms that are coming and the masses that that the mass and the bulk that is being created displaces existing residents. A new development that replaces these homes maximize square footage and rises land value. And one of the things that is interesting in the Near Northwest Plan document that has come out, their first report is that Sunnyside is one of the areas where we have higher homeownership of Hispanic and residents. And we want to keep that in this neighborhood. And so once again, I will just go back to what I and what the working group, the residents of Sunnyside, who I have the honor and privilege of representing have been saying that this proposal will create modest but meaningful change in the massing and appearance of new development. And with that, I'll just sit back. And if you have questions that Brad can't answer, I'm happy to chime in, but I'll let Brad take it from here. But just wanted, it's been definitely a partnership. We got sworn in July of 2019, and this had been going on for years prior. I'd worked for my predecessor. And so this has definitely been a big partnership with CPD and Brad and Abe for years through COVID and through lots of trials and tribulations through the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, questions and comments? I have Angel, Heidi and Fred. Angel.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Brad. Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. I guess this could be for either of you, but I'm curious about the anticipated sort of scope of of this, like how much land is developable in Sunnyside and do these conservation overlay requirements, are they the same for development, new developments at as redevelopments? Just trying to understand how much this applies to in in Sunnyside.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of how much developable land is, I think that's going to be a really hard one to answer, because you know, like vacant land, there's probably almost almost none. Buildings that are, you know, in danger of being being torn down and a building going in their place, probably many. Hopefully not any percentage beyond, you know, it's still a small number in the scope, probably, I think, that are in direct danger of this in scope of the entire neighborhood. But I think there, I mean, this is a big neighborhood, you know, there are 3,000 some odd properties we mentioned there. And so certainly there are many of them that could be in danger of that type of change.
Has that been a trend that you've seen sort of demolition and redevelopment?
Well, and I know I I I want to also invite the councilwoman to or her staff to to weigh in here, but our understanding based on their research is that the majority of the building activity has happened in the TU zone districts. And I I would, I I don't have data for this, maybe they do, but I would suspect many of those involved demolition.
That's correct. Most of the redevelopment in the Sunnyside neighborhood has happened in the two unit area. And that's where we've seen the the bat, the mass, but also it's happened in the single family, in the single unit area. And to answer one of your points, this is for new construction. So this is you take an old 1934 bungalow and you scrape it. And then you redevelop it in your place. And this is when these these trigger, these solutions trigger. It wouldn't be if I wanted to add an addition to my kitchen. The one thing that I do think would trigger is right now, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment to have a dermer. Dermers are no longer allowed. So if you want to pop your top and do a modest pop top, you are not allowed to do that. You have to go to the Board of Adjustment. And this zoning, this overlay would allow dormers so that we can have make people staying in their house and have smaller additions as your family grows that stay within the scale and actually keep costs down. I hope that answered part of your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Councilwoman. So it sounds like you and your constituents view this overlay district as an anti displacement tool. And I think you may have just touched on it with being able to allow one story units to pop their top and keep people in place. Is that an accurate assessment?
It isn't. It is an accurate assessment to be able to keep the modest housing that we have in Northwest Denver. And as as you have a family, be able to expand it, but in a modest way that's affordable.
Okay, did the other components of this overlay district, do you do you and your constituents also view as an anti displacement tool? The brick requirements, the front porch requirements, the finished floor height requirements? Do you view that those will prevent scrapes?
So we believe that the maximum square footage, because the market is driven by square footage and how big a square foot home is, that that would also be an anti displacement tool so that people can have smaller homes, because the bigger the house, the more expensive it it is. As for the porches, that's more of a Denver theme, especially in Sunnyside, of it being one of Denver's original neighborhoods, we have porches. And I would say that probably during COVID, we explored our porches and what they could be used for more than any time ever. People have people who are in smaller homes found respite on their front porches. And also, it's a tool to make sure that we have a neighborhood watch. So people usually have large lots of neighborhood watches in my neighborhood and all throughout District One. And people use their porches to communicate and talk and sit on. So I don't think that's an anti displacement tool. I think it's a community building tool from my from what I have heard from my constituents. As for the brick requirement, that's why we don't have a map of the exact area, because some of the areas don't have brick. And that is a conversation that we're having right now. Is it, is it, is it is, should we be mandating brick in areas that don't have brick, like post World War II homes? They have, we have areas like that. And so that's a discussion that we're having further because we don't want to have that cause more displacement. And we don't want that to cause more gentrification and say, oh, these these, this overlay requirement is so restrictive that it'd be easier to scrape, because that's often what happens in Northwest Denver, is it's easier to scrape and start new than to use an older structure and adaptively reuse it because our code is so rigid. So no, not on that one necessarily. And I couldn't remember the the last one that you asked me.
It was just the the brick, the front porches, and then the finished floor height was the third one.
The finished floor height, no, that one isn't also isn't getting to the anti displacement. That's more of looking at the built environment. And it's preserving the sense of place that we have in Sunnyside. And we've had a lot of conversation when this overlay first happened took place, it was massive as I'm sure Brad can talk about, it probably had lots of different solutions. And so we have narrowed this down to be as simplistic as possible. But that one is just preserving the place and making sure that we understand that this is one of Denver's original neighborhoods.
Right. Thank you for all of that, Councilwoman. I appreciate it. When you're talking about being able to keep existing structures and reuse them and and prevent the scrapes. I did notice in some of those pictures that there are, that there were homes that have a front stoop. Would you be willing to to add any kind of language into this that allows for a front stoop? So those houses that do have them, if they wanted to alter, they wouldn't be put into a position of having to build a front porch?
I would be open to suggestions like that. That's why I think it's so important that we are here in front of you. And if you could provide us with what you think the dimensions are for a good stoop to be usable, we're absolutely open to having that conversation.
I don't think that's going to be my area expertise, Councilwoman, to provide the exact size of a stoop based on the houses in the neighborhood. I think that's probably more appropriate coming from the community and and architects within the community that know that housing stock better than I do. So I I thank you for for asking for my input and will defer to the community on on those front stoops. And then just my last comment, Councilwoman, would be the concern about government making homes less accessible to people who have less mobility than than a fully able bodied person. So the one home that I did see not allowed on one of those slides was a universal entry. And I looked at that and said, hey, somebody who needs to use a wheelchair to get around could get into that house. And so that's just the the one, I understand preserving the the character that everything's kind of bumped up, but there's also got to be a place for everybody in our neighborhoods and including those who need to use a wheelchair to get around. I'd ask you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. The cues I have at is Fred, Gosha, and then myself. Fred?
Yeah, thanks, Heidi, for bringing the the question, the mobility question up there. I have to say that was one of the, to me, most, I guess, disturbing elements of this is that you know, essentially you're mandating houses that say folks who need to use wheelchairs really aren't welcome to move to this neighborhood. And I think in terms of people trying to purchase houses that they can age in place in and and really stay in a neighborhood for a long time, you know, 12 inches up above grade means a 12 foot ramp to access your house. um, you know, twelve inches up above grade means a twelve-foot ramp to access your house. Um, and again, I'm not sure how compatible that ends up being with porch requirement. So I really would encourage you guys to maybe spend some time with the folks at the city who specialize in, in, in mobility and access, in ADA, uh, to see how this might relate to that. You know, when we talk about this being one of Denver's original neighborhoods, at that time, I don't think we cared so much about people who had mobility issues. They weren't really expected to leave the house. And, and I think that has changed. So I really encourage you to, to look at that. I, I'd love to see, because I, I understand the, the point of trying to prevent houses being taken down, but where that does happen, I'd love to understand a little bit better, uh, when this comes forward, the viability of duplexes in the TU zone with the changes that are proposed in terms of bulk plane. Is that still then going to be a viable form? Or has the overlay essentially created an SU district out of a TU district? Because I, I think that's an important one. You know, when we talk about affordability, it's still, we still have a shortage of units. So I, I think that's an important issue. And then finally, again, when we talk about affordability, I, I believe the, the brick requirement is kind of onerous, to be honest. Um, you know, houses were built out of brick because that was a structural material. And now it's a, it's a, it's facing, it's a, it's a facade. Uh, and there are certainly other less expensive, just as durable materials out there that architects are using in interesting ways. And I think to, to limit that, makes it, makes sure that those houses are going to be expensive, uh, or at least more expensive than they maybe need to be. And I think also, um, you know, as we look at, as we look at historic preservation guidelines, we, we don't want to mimic, we don't want nostalgia in our buildings. And so by limiting that, it, it concerns me that we, uh, we really are limiting the scope of what can be made, in a sense. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would just, I'd say that, um, for we've modeled for the TU, because I understand that same concern. I'm not attempting to make a two-unit zone district into a single-unit zone district at all. So this, we did actually more modeling in the TU zone district so that we understood that this would apply in it. And we have two architects who work in this neighborhood and also live in this neighborhood who have been very adamant that we allow duplex zoning to continue to be, to be two-unit zoning, exactly what it is. And so this model, um, and we've done a lot of modeling to make that sure. But I will for sure keep that in mind and make, and I know that my constituents are watching as well to get feedback and comments from all of you on your other, um, thoughts that you've had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ignacio, Gosha, and myself.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, um, Brad, I have a couple of questions here. Um, let's see, uh, slide, uh, I think it's twelve, yeah, slide twelve and eleven. Uh, you don't have to put them up, but, uh, what we're talking about is the, uh, the base plane. So, uh, the base plane is where you start measuring the height of the building. So the, uh, on the single family, sorry, on the, uh, on the pitch roof, uh, you have thirty feet now. Uh, where, where do you start measuring? You start measuring from the base plane? Or from the, uh, from the, uh, stoop, uh, height? From the, from the, from the finished floor level?
Now, as it's drafted, it'd be from the front base plane, you know, in, as you know, probably you'll recall, like, in the, these kind of single unit zones, there's like a front base plane and a rear base plane. So the way we've got it set up in Bungalow and the current intention is to do the same as it would be measured from the front base plane.
Okay. So if you have a porch that is, uh, the maximum, which is thirty-six inches, then you are already two feet shorter than, than the alternative, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all right. And, uh, um, you know, that goes a little bit to what Fred was talking about, the, the ADA and accessibility. But I, I am not as concerned about that, because, uh, even if you're at the front and you kind of put a ramp, uh, there, you still have a back. And, uh, you still have a way to gain that height through the length of the, of the lot. So, so that's it. Now, on the, on the, uh, low slope, which I actually like to call a shallow slope, because there's no really low slope. Uh, the, the twenty-two foot, again, the same thing, the base plane is what we just discussed. So, so you are going to end up with a shorter building. Um, like the comment I had on the parking to residential on the previous, uh, overlay, uh, I think that you should go a little bit higher, maybe, uh, give it thirteen feet for, uh, two stories, uh, and so on. And also define at which point, uh, it becomes a shallow slope, right? Um, I think it is defined somewhere, I don't know if it's in, in, uh, in, uh, chapter thirteen of the code, but, uh, there is a definition at which point you become a, uh, a shallow slope. Okay?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just going to put it up here for you to remind. So it's, it's a, it's a three-twelve pitch or less is a low slope.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so you see, if you have a twenty-two and you start, uh, from the base plane at thirty-six, now you are three feet less than that, that's nineteen for two stories. Uh, it's getting a little bit, uh, squat, but I like the idea that the flat roof buildings need to be uh, on a different, uh, on a different, uh, uh, rule, right? Um, uh, I like the idea of the dormer. Um, and, uh, let's talk about the openings, the, uh, sorry, the brick, uh, is the, the brick, uh, the sixty percent of the brick, are you counting the, uh, windows and doors, the openings as part of that sixty percent or?
Yeah. As, as we've drafted it, they're just, they don't, they are not part of the calculation. So, because we, we talked about this with the neighborhood, the neighborhood did not want to put in a rule that would discourage windows, right? And so when we look around the country at other brick requirements, typically what we saw was that the window area or also doors, um, were typically excluded from that definition. So if you took an elevation, a wall, um, that had a bunch of windows, you, you, you subtract the area of the windows from the calculation, and then you take whatever was remaining that was an exterior wall, and that, that would be used for the percentage.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, and then, uh, talking about brick as a material, um, I've seen not too many, but there are several, uh, buildings that maybe were break, but are now a stucco, and they have been stucco for a while. Um, and, uh, I don't know, I think that you should give it a little bit of thought about what is the, uh, the, uh, the role of, uh, stucco there? We can do, I mean, so I guess talking about the cost of materials and so on, we're talking about new buildings. Um, so the cost of brick, is that an equitable thing? Uh, for, for a new building in order to, this starts becoming, uh, in a way, uh, a deterrent for Matt Mansions. And, uh, and I think that it is, um, in a way, uh, a, a good strategy to require this kind of material, because what we're trying to do here is to preserve mostly the, uh, the existing buildings. Um, so I'm going to stop there. Uh, keep them going. Thank you very much.
Do, do you mind, would it be okay, Joel, if I just made a couple of comments on the accessibility questions?
Yeah, please do.
Uh, our comments. Um, so I know, Fred, I don't think you were on planning board yet when we came uh, last year with the, the Bungalow overlay. I think there are fair concerns, and I think we've talked about them a lot with the neighborhood. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that didn't show up in the slide, which were, that we did in Bungalow and that I think we intend to do here is that we, we built in additional flexibility for ramps. We made it so that this requirement for, uh, a raised first floor only be applicable to the front forty percent of the zone lot. Um, is it, is it as, uh, flexible as no rule at all? No. Um, but we did take some steps to try to create flexibility that didn't exist in the code, um, now for where ramps can go and such. And I don't want to speak too much, but I know Naomi um, Grunditz with the council office did reach out to some folks in the city that specialize in accessibility and, um, may be able to comment on those discussions.
Yeah, I'd welcome any more background on that and, and, um, you might want to stop sharing your screen because you're showing the Zoom itself, which is recursive.
Okay. Thanks for letting me know.
Um, and if we want to promote Naomi, she's certainly welcome to present or Councilwoman, if you'd like to comment on that.
Yes, so, um, when we were bringing forward the, um, Bungalow overlay, we met with, um, Human Rights and Community Partnerships has their, um, um, mobility. And so we met with them, Dr. Ayesha Russo. And unfortunately, there was no guidance, because in single-family and homes like this, you don't, it's not required to have ADA. And so it's really important for all of us to think about aging in place. And it's really important for us to think about making sure we have homes that are accessible to everybody. Um, just this week, I was at Chaffey Park, which is in, within the Sunnyside neighborhood. And a father who is a paraplegic donated backstops and backboards. And two new, um, it's so that people at Chaffey Park could actually play basketball, because there were so, they were so worn out. And he, and so I played basketball with somebody in a wheelchair just this week with Denver Parks Trust. So it's absolutely at the forefront of our, um, conversation. But unfortunately, all the people that Naomi and I met with, they didn't really have any guidance other than that aging in place would be great. Um, but it's not mandated within these zone districts that we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah. It, it sounds like the, the conversation that's being invited here is, is not about what's mandated, but making, e- existing ability to make things accessible harder to do. So if, even if it might not be mandated today, there's a certain ability for people to build things in a way that's accessible that this might be, uh, working against. I, 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 I think that's the framing that I'm hearing. Um, and if Naomi Grunditz, who was on, cared to speak, uh, you could raise your hand and we'll certainly promote you. Uh, next I see Gosha.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I, I agree with, um, some of the technical or all of the technical concerns, accessibility. Um, yeah, not so much mandating accessibility, but not, not mandating inaccessibility, I think is the concern that we're pointing at. Um, now personally, I, I, I just had a foot surgery five weeks ago. So for somebody who started to walk Denver, not being able to walk has been very humbling learning experience. And definitely can, uh, sympathize with, you know, the couple steps that would be mandated in, in a design i- if they, if they could be avoided. Um, I also shared Fred's concern about the duplex. I think with the bulk height limitation, uh, we're looking at a one-story duplex. Um, so that, that may not be feasible. Um, but I, 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 I wanted to talk about, um, different concerns. And I, I really appreciate, uh, Councilwoman bringing this topic to us and working on it. I know this is not the first overlay, and I think we're kind of going through these conversations and, and um, considering different issues. And I, I see both sides. So, you know, I, I see, uh, development going in, inside Sunny Side and four hundred thousand dollar single-family homes being scraped and replaced with a duplex that sells for one point five million dollars for each side. And also these duplexes are not only large, but they're designed in modern Scandinavian style or modern farmhouse style. And I wonder, you know, where, where's the context? How are they context-sensitive to our kind of cultural, um, design qualities and the character of neighborhood? So I, I definitely feel it and recognize it and, and maybe even live it in my professional life. Uh, and struggle with it as architect and as a resident of Denver. Um, on the flip side, I want to kind of pose the similar questions as I did in the prior discussions about who is it for and to what end? Uh, because we don't see, um, design overlays or conservation overlays like this in Barnum, where there's similar, uh, housing stock instances that there are mostly single fam, a single-story buildings and large families and, um, a large percentage of Hispanic homeownership. And we would like to preserve, um, that homeownership there, but, but we don't see it there. We see it in Sunnyside. And, and, and to what end? It is to, uh, prevent development and push development or redevelopment somewhere else. The communities that don't have resources to request and, and, uh, implement overlay like that. So I, I do have these equity concerns, because if we are talking about preventing displacement and gentrification, then we should be really thinking more comprehensive way and really looking at neighborhoods that are at risk of being displaced and, and, uh, falling victim of gentrification. So I, I don't, I, well, while I appreciate these arguments here, I also don't see them being applied holistically on a scale of a city. So we're kind of pushing, again, the, the ball or pushing the buck, um, somewhere else. Um, not in my backyard, somewhere else. So I, I definitely see both sides and I see both concerns. And I don't have answers. I wish, I, I wish I was better equipped to actually come up with a solution. I think, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a challenging one. It's, it's challenging to kind of maintaining the character and scale and, um, of, of, of the neighborhoods, but at the same time not cause gentrification elsewhere at the expense of our own backyard, for like a better word. So thank you for working on it. I thank you for bringing it up. Um, I would welcome response. Again, it's not really a question. It's, it's more of a discussion item.
I would like just to mention one thing. Um, the West Area Plan is going through right now, and I only have a very small portion. I have my portion of West Coast facts. But we sit on every single meeting and Naomi and I are on the steering committee. And in Barnum and Villa Park and all of these other areas, they are looking to guidance, like the Harkness Heights overlay and, or the Bungalow overlay, sorry. And they are also looking at the Design Eight overlay. That's on Tennyson for active street use for areas along Julian, for areas along Knox, for areas that don't have, that have mixed-use zoning that don't, are, are being, are being redeveloped into a hundred percent residential. So they're losing their commercial notes. And so these conversations and even the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay has been very discussed, greatly discussed in the West Area Plan as a tool to help with anti-gentrification and anti-displacement. And so what I've seen, what my colleagues do, is I have, um, five different colleagues in two different areas, so two in one area and three in another area, who are using the Design Overlay Eight for Tennyson on their areas right now. And so that is why we wanted to make this overlay more general and keep it more general so that as the West Area Plan, it actually, I think you all will be getting a draft soon. The draft is coming out. It actually talks about and calls out these overlays that we're doing in Northwest Denver. I just set up my office different, so I have an in-house planner. Not every single council office does that. I wish we did. I wish we had city council that had a planner that we could designate to all of, all thirteen of us. I just have a council district that's close to the urban core that has had lots of issues. So when I ran in one, I decided that that was a priority. And so I wish everyone did, but I feel like the work that I'm doing can be, can be applicable for other areas. So I just wanted to say that because we're just so close to getting this draft out for the West Area Plan. And we've had so many conversations about the overlay in those task force meetings, um, that we are using them. So thank you for that. And I do hear you talking about the ADA accessibility. So thank you for that. And I do hear you talking about the ADA accessibility. I remember this conversation vividly during the bungalow overlay. And I hear you now and I'll make sure to be the conduit and the ambassador of this message from you all back to my community. And Brad, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, just the only thing I would add to that, I guess, I wanted to respond to the part about the duplex. And, you know, are we effectively through this, you know, preventing a reasonably sized duplex in these two unit areas? I'm not going to put my CAD files testing up on the screen right now, but I, I, I do, we have done a lot of that. And I think we can bring that back to you when we come to, to kind of play that out a little bit more. But I feel comfortable based on the analysis of the overlay that I've done that on, on most lots out there, you can still build a pretty large duplex under, under these rules. It, it would constrict it a little bit in terms of that lowering the, you know, where the bulk plane does its, does its cant up to the top for sure. But on a typical lot, you know, to do a duplex anyway, you have to have a 50-foot wide lot, I believe. And so I fill in it with, with five-foot setbacks on each side. I feel like what, what I've analyzed, you can easily do a pretty substantial amount of square footage under that type of condition. We can show that better next time.
In the form of a side-by-side two-story duplex?
Yeah, or even you could get three. Again, if you can figure out a way to slope the, the top roof under this overlay, then you could possibly get three up there and then using that, the dormer, the, the dormer's ability to pierce the bulk plane provides flexibility as well. So.
For a duplex?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not an architect. The words you're using are bringing up images of urban house to me, not, not duplex. And, and I think visuals are, are going to help and, and councilman, I appreciate your, your offer to revisit the, the ADA related issues in the existing overlay, which by name is intended to be used elsewhere. And, you know, I don't think we found our way through this, that was approved and adopted. But, you know, the topic isn't, isn't in the past yet. With regard to this overlay and this briefing, first, I appreciate that it's named for the specific area that it's in. That, that, that helps me say, okay, this is a conservation overlay. There's an existing pattern in this area. And these are the key to character defining elements. That lines up for me. It doesn't raise the questions of have you studied all the other areas that a more generic name implies this might be good for? And that, that's great. My colleagues have brought up a lot of the topics that I don't really feel the need to go into. And I think they've teased apart the two different things that are happening here. One is changing the incentives. You're, you're the, the change of the bulk plane and other big moves. You're disincentivizing scrape offs and you're upfront about that. People still can. You're not preventing it. You're not landmarking and saying these structures must remain, but you're lowering the incentive because the, the yield will be lower. And that's an interesting approach now. ADUs are supported. You can build the two units, whether it's you're building an urban house or you're with a, an ADU attached or detached, where you're building a duplex. So, you know, that's not activating a lot of concern for me. But it is interesting using, using zoning to try to disincentivize scrape offs. The second thing, in addition to the incentives is of course trying to ensure that new things fit some key character defining patterns. That's what a conservation overlay is for. And I think this will be, you know, somewhat successful in that, in, in, in the general ways. We're talking about how big can a building be, et cetera. I, I've spent some time wrestling with the brick issue. I don't believe that belongs in zoning. I've gone back to every example I can think of where we regulate materials and we do. And it's all been design standards and guidelines, even in the old zoning code in a Rappahoe Square. Rappahoe Square required brick or basinry or, you know, other cementious materials, I think is the words that were used. And then had a bunch of exceptions of what they don't mean. You can't use EFS, et cetera. But that wasn't in the zoning code. That was in the Rappahoe Square design guidelines. I believe there's some materiality stuff in, in the Union Station area that's in design guidelines, not in the zoning. I've searched the zoning code for mentions of materials. And I think like in the master plan context, there's some mention of, you know, honor Denver's brick heritage, but it's not, you know, it's like general language. It's not specifying. And, and then I think closer to home, I live in a landmark district in one of Denver's earliest neighborhoods, you know, Curtis Park, you know, 1880s through 1910. And okay, with landmark, we have another level of review. And I'm not saying landmark is the same tool, but even when you're in Curtis Park and you're in the landmark district and you're building a new building, landmark commission themselves don't require brick in Curtis Park. Now, you have to show you're using quality materials and there's this, you know, subjective, but successful conversation. And so we see different materials being used here that so, sometimes aren't the usual materials, but after you're used to them for a year or so, you're like, gosh, that fits in and it's of its time. The fact that there can be a conversation because it's part of a design review process is the appropriate place to have materials discussion. I, I would really need some convincing that we want to put materials requirements in the zoning code. And by convincing, you know, be like, well, how do we decide what the zoning should be? We do in zoning what planning tells us to be. Do we have a plan that says we should regulate materials and it should be done in the zoning code? I think it's the wrong place for it. So I, I just want to put that out there. Happy to take feedback and I know I didn't end any of my, any of my statements with a question mark, Brad?
Well, I just wanted to remind that there is, there's, it's not quite as a direct link as what you just described. But there is a, there is language in the Blueprint Denver that says to use conservation overlays. And if you then go to the Denver zoning code and you look at what it says conservation overlay should be used for, and basically the enabling language in the code for use of a conservation overlay, it mentions building materials. And so it's a little bit more of a circuitous link than you described, but I think, I, I think it's kind of there. That said, I think we, I, you said, you've done a lot of thinking about the brick. I think we all, that's the big, really, really tough one here, you know? I mean, they're all, all this work is tough, but that one's tough. It's new. It's different. And I, I think you're right. I think most commonly, when you see materials regulated, it is through a design review process. Unfortunately, whether the neighborhood would be up for that or not, I don't know, but that tool has not been offered up as an alternative to zoning. And so I'm just wanting to put that context out there, that the neighborhood's been offered to, to explore a conservation overlay. And that's the tool that they've brought to the table.
Yeah, and, and let me, well, first you've said something I'm going to go read up because I, I, I didn't know that. The, the enabling language regarding conservation overlay suggests it could be used for that, has not yet been used for that as far as I can tell. But suggesting it could be used for that, that's, I appreciate your pointing that out. I, I would offer this to the neighborhood. There may be alternatives to brick that are just as durable and just as good. And you don't know till someone proposes them and you have a conversation. That's what designer view is good for. Even in Curtis Park, and it's certainly not the only landmark district, but is a much old, you know, on the oldest side in Denver kind of neighborhood, you can see the success of that. And going back to, you know, the, the two goals here, one is design, one is compatibility and the other is incentives. Yeah, designer view is another damn process. And, and, and somebody who's going to scrape off a building to, to replace it is going to have to factor that in. And if that's a slight disincentive, fine, that sounds compatible with what you're trying to do. But if somebody is going to scrape off a building, they are going to build something new. I think you can have a better outcome letting someone with, with design ideas, talk about the materials and how they're going to be used and have that conversation, designer view conversation, than somebody at the front desk who says zoning says brick. Sorry, can't talk to you. Ignacio.
Yeah, actually, I, I don't think that councilwoman Sandoval and the overlay design team is, was planning to do overlay, I mean, design guidelines for, for this, because that's yet another level of involvement. And that is, that is a lot of work. And it is, it is really weird to, to have it here in, in, in zoning. But you have to realize that this is only for the new buildings, right? It is, so, you know, and the question is what kind of brick? You have many of these buildings painted brick, brick that has been stockoed over and, and so on. The idea is the conservation of the, of the existing and really to take away some of the incentives for the, the McMansions to, to have something that is closer to the ground, closer to the scale of the neighborhood and, and so on. I, I, I did not object to the, to the brick being there, but I, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's a material that, I mean, if we were talking about for existing buildings and having them break for fit and so on, that would be an onerous thing and it would be counterproductive for the conservation purpose.
Thanks. And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting conservation overlay instead of, designer view, instead of the conservation overlay altogether. I'm saying that could be a place for the materials discussion and those standards can be as simple or complex as you cared for them, but the opportunity to have a discussion. So just to be clear where I was coming from, not, not to diminish your points at all. Any other comments or questions on this? I love when we have engagement on info items, folks, because this is, this is the time when things are still malleable. And this is a comfortable conversation. I look forward to the time we can be doing these around a real table, which leads us to the last item on the agenda. Thank you very much, councilwoman. Thank you, Brad. Turning it over to Andrew Webb to talk about announcements, including when we might be seeing each other in person more regularly.
Yes, thank you, Joel, and thanks to all of you for, again, a good, long discussion tonight on some pretty, pretty meaty items. We are essentially targeting the September 7th Planning Board hearing as the first that will be back in person. So we're, we're working, as you know, Heidi had to catch a bus and wasn't able to stay on the call on the meeting. But we've been working to, you know, figure out a solution for both Planning Board and Landmark Preservation Commission. And it looks like that week will be the week that we go live with the first in-person meetings. They will be in the, in the web building, the Wellington Web Building on the fourth floor in the same room where LPC has met for years. And I'm working right now with Heidi on a few things to get prepared for that, including updating as necessary or getting badge access for those of you who may not even have the, the badges that get you into the web building, arranging parking. And we're also going to set up a couple of rehearsal opportunities for August, by which time we'll, we hope that we'll have, we'll have our, our four new members on the board as well to join us for those. So we'll have an opportunity to kind of have some practice sessions in the room and you can all see how it works. And, and maybe we can, if we identify things that aren't working quite right, we can have some time to fix them. But so, yeah, so September 7th is our, our target date for the first in-person or return to in-person meeting for planning board.
Well, I guess it's a loss not to have it at the Parwinder Library Building, library room, but I won't be there anyhow.
It is. And, 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 you know, that's something that's not off the table at some point in the future. The Parwinder, you know, the space has been kind of changed and the use of that space has changed and the scheduling doesn't currently line up with planning board, but we'll, we'll, we'll take that under consideration. And I do agree that like the, the camera setup in there is better. And we'll, we'll, we'll keep working with the, the folks that manage the city county building and see if we can get back into the Parwinder room at some point.
Is it a matter of the technology investment that's going to make this meeting in person, but the public having an option of meeting, of joining remotely? Is that's driving us to the web building so they can invest in the technology in one place at the moment or?
It, it is. And because we are using, we'll, we'll continue to use Zoom just because that seems to be the more kind of ubiquitous virtual platform for people who participate or participate virtually. We have the equipment in there essentially already that we need and can make it work. And so Denver Eight will continue to, to participate and record the meetings as a participant. But at, at some point, I know the, but both the camera and the microphone setups are, are better in Parwinder. And so we will, we'll look at, you know, whether we can get back into that space at some point.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's got a lot of character.
It sure does, yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order?
That's all I have.
Thank you all very much. We're, we're off June 15th. No meeting for the rest of, for, for June 15th, right?
That's correct. Yes. So we'll see those of you who are able to join us on the 29th for a discussion about the expanding equity in rezoning. But yes, no meeting on the, on the 15th this month.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not looking at my calendar at the moment. If we haven't sent a calendar invite for that, it'd be a great idea.
Oh, I, I have sent a calendar invite and, and I updated it more recently with location and, and most of you responded in the affirmative. So I think, I think we're all set.
Totally on top of things. We're lucky to have you. Thanks, everyone. We are adjourned.
For $8 an hour, we stand. And an incredible selfless, fantastic human being that we have lost, Madam President. I, I want to switch gears and mention an event that's going to be happening Thursday in my district. Many of you know that the voters of this city in November approved general obligation bonds, $30 million of which have been allocated to renovating and reopening the May Bonfils Stanton Theater at Loretto Heights in Southwest Denver, creating a community accessible To renovating and reopening the May Bonfide Stanton Theater at Loretto Heights in southwest Denver, creating a community accessible performing arts complex in a. Seriously underserved part of town. The city's Arts and Venues Department, Ginger White and Mark Jarian, who's a program manager there, they're going to come down to the Bear Valley Branch Library on Thursday at one thirty. And give a presentation, an update on the status of that project. For folks who are in Denver's performing arts community, if you are in the performing arts, if you have an interest in them, I invite you to come down to the Bear Valley Branch Library. At fifty-one seventy-one West Dartmouth on Thursday at one, one o'clock, did I say one thirty? One o'clock to two thirty and hear the update, there's a lot to report and with that, Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Flynn, and please convey our sincere condolences to Officer Kennedy's families, family and friends. It's a huge loss. Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Flynn, for your. Recognition and also from saving me the hard. Journey of transitioning from it to something else. So thank you for that. I want to say two things, first of all, I want to let everyone know that on May twenty ninth, between two and four, District Ten is putting on a program called The Wheel Deal. So it will be on a coma between eleventh and twelfth in the Golden Triangle neighborhood. It, we're shutting down the the street for a block party, we'll have bands, two bands, we'll have food trucks, we'll have. Information about the fifty-two eighty trail, which we as voters just authorized to fund seven million dollars for the first hundred percent realized segment of the fifty-two eighty trail right there on a coma between tenth and twelfth. We'll also learn about old. Gas alternative vehicles from the Forty Museum, Forty Museum will be bringing vehicles out there. Again, May twenty ninth from two to four P M on a coma between eleventh and twelfth, I'd love for for people to come out. The second thing I wanted to mention is I want to. I complain to Dottie sometimes about how we could do more about our transit infrastructure. I want to thank Dottie, we have a bill that I will not take off consent, but I want to thank them for being. For adopting technology and allowing us to be more flexible with the way we manage our parking and payment systems. I think that embracing technology is something we can do to make humans' lives better and if we can help people pay for their parking in an easy way such as. Using. Using their credit card or even better, using an app on their phone, I think that that's that's a game changer for a lot of folks and I think that'll really help. Us have people who are compliant with parking and and really the ultimate idea for our parking meters is not meant. To be a huge revenue source for our city, it's designed to make sure that people only use a limited resource for as long as they need and no more, so. I'm glad that Dottie's embracing technology and allowing us to achieve that primary mission of of monitoring and managing that precious resource, which is parking. In our city, which continues to get more precious every day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Seeing no other speakers, we'll move on, there are no presentations this evening, there are no communications, there are two proclamations being read this evening. Councilmember Cashman, will you please read proclamation twenty-two dash six twenty-seven?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I actually have two proclamations to read this evening, one's coming a little bit later in the month than normal and the other's coming a little bit earlier than normal and I'll explain both along the way. But this is proclamation number twenty-two dash zero six two seven, declaring the month of May to be mental health month in Denver. Whereas mental health month has been observed since nineteen forty-nine to raise awareness of the importance of mental health and whereas. Three in ten Coloradans are in need of mental health or substance use disorder care. And whereas black indigenous people of color and LGBTQIA plus populations experience disproportionate impacts to mental health due to many factors. Including but not limited to discrimination, bias and structural inequality. And whereas the many challenges Coloradans and Denverites faced in the past year have highlighted the importance of promoting mental well-being and developing. A strong behavioral healthcare system and whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has broken down barriers. When it comes to talking about mental health and seeking care and this opportunity to reframe the conversation must outlast the COVID nineteen crisis. And whereas. Preventative care and healthy learning environments are central to ensuring healthy minds and a strong start for all of Colorado's children. And whereas from childhood to old age, the quality of our lives depends on our mental health. Every phase of life brings its own challenges and opportunities for continuing mental growth and development. And whereas building healthcare capacity will improve health outcomes, save taxpayer dollars and enhance community well-being. And whereas in twenty nineteen, Denver voters approved the Caring for Denver sales tax that bring that earmarks some eleven million dollars annually. For programs that address a variety of mental health related concerns. And whereas Colorado is an emerging leader in innovation and mental health promotion and substance use harm reduction and is committed to creative solutions. To meet the needs of all communities and whereas Denver is working to increase access to housing, healthcare, substance misuse services. That contribute to the promotion of healthier minds across the lifespan of all Denver residents. And whereas as a community, we can support one another by reducing stigma, encouraging self-care and participate in an open dialogue about mental health. And whereas with more trauma-informed practices, we can collectively become more aware, recover from our trauma. And go on to thrive by having compassion for ourselves and each other. And whereas the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce Leadership Denver Class of twenty twenty-two. Has assembled a group of community leaders to organize Denver Mental Health Month. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver. Section one. That the Council of the City and County of Denver declares the month of May to be Mental Health Month in the City and County of Denver. Section two, that the Clerk of the City and County of Denver shall affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation. And a copy be transmitted to the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce twenty twenty-two leadership class.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman, your motion to adopt.
Yes, ma'am, my move that proclamation number twenty-two dash zero six two eight be adopted.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council, Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, as I mentioned, we're later in the month than we would normally like to be to read a proclamation, but, you know, it was, it was brought. About ten days ago, just a little bit too late to get in on last week's schedule and the topic is is so much in the minds of of people. Throughout Denver and Colorado and the United States right now that we felt it was important to shine the light on the need for improved mental health services. In in the city and certainly in the state, I I don't think it's any secret that unfortunately with all the things that Denver and Colorado have to be proud of. Our funding for mental health services is not one of them and we're far lower in compared to our sister states than we would like to be, so. Just pleased to bring this forward and appreciate the leadership class for for their efforts in in bringing awareness to this important topic. And I would ask my colleagues to join me in voting this through.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilmember Cashman, and happy to support this very important proclamation and work. Madam Secretary, roll call. See Tabaka? Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes, proclamation twenty-two dash zero six two seven has been adopted. We have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance, Councilmember Cashman, we'll start that if you'd like to introduce who will accept it.
Yes, we have Kat Ling from the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class and floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cashman and the Denver City Council, we are very excited for you all to pass this proclamation, my name is Kat Ling. I'm a CEO of Moonshot Adventures, which is a local nonprofit that supports underrepresented leaders to launch innovative schools and programs in Denver Metro. And I'm also a member of the Leadership Denver Class of twenty twenty-two, a Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce program that brings together. Education, business, nonprofit and government leaders to work together to better the city of Denver. This year, our project was Denver Mental Health Awareness Month as one of our mayor's project. And we created a social media campaign to enhance community awareness of Denver-based mental health resources. We've had our campaign mainly through our Facebook page that you can find Denver Mental Health Month. And we had all the information posted in English and in Spanish and have reached thousands of viewers and. Denver citizens so far. The campaign includes information from dozens of local organizations and initiatives to highlight their work, which has been incredible to see just the amount of community organizations that we have doing amazing work for mental health in our city. A few of them include Joy's Resistance, Eye Matter, Second Wind Fund, Struggle of Love Foundation, Asian Girls Ignite, Asset Education, Caring for Denver. Culinary Hospitality Outreach and Wellness and more. We also had the project funded through two Colorado-based foundations, the Butterfly Foundation and the Turner Foundation. We are really excited about this proclamation coming as our community heals and continues to heal in the pandemic. We know that the stakes are really high right now for our youth, for our elders and for our broader community. In that we know that this is the time for Colorado and Denver to be a pace setter in what it looks like for mental health supports. There's still a week left in Denver Mental Health Month and so we hope that we can encourage people to go and engage on our Facebook page, like and share resources and information. Our hope is that coming out of this, our city will be more aware of the grant, great resources that community organizations are doing here and and folks can really see visibility and awareness. Of what our local community members are doing. Thank you again for the proclamation on behalf of our Leadership Denver class and group.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for sponsoring that proclamation, Councilman Cashman, and very happy that we were able to celebrate that important work, as you were saying, Leadership Denver twenty twenty-two. Council Pro Tem Torres, I was thinking back to our time as the Leadership Denver Class of twenty eleven. It's been a minute, huh? With Herndon, with Councilman Herndon, so great work to the Leadership Denver class. Councilmember Cashman, will you please read proclamation twenty-two dash six twenty-eight for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, this is proclamation twenty-two dash six twenty-eight, declaring June third as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June third through fifth. As Wear Orange Weekend and June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas forty-one thousand Americans are killed annually by guns, an average of a hundred and ten each day. And another eighty-five thousand are shot and wounded every year. And whereas the U.S. accounts for only four percent of the world's population, but thirty-five percent of global suicides. And Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas in Colorado, seventy-eight percent of firearm deaths are suicides, nearly half of all suicide deaths in Colorado involve the use of a firearm, which is the most common method. Of suicide death in the state and whereas in twenty twenty-one in Colorado, eight hundred and fifty persons died from gun violence. With suicides claiming six hundred and thirty-three lives and homicide another hundred and eighty-two, with the majority of those dying from gun violence being less than thirty-five years of age. And whereas in twenty twenty-one in Denver, ninety-six people died by homicide, with eighty-five percent of those committed by firearm. Another two hundred and twenty-eight people were shot but survived their injuries. And whereas the Denver metropolitan area continues to remember and suffer the devastating impacts of mass shootings, including Columbine High School in nineteen ninety-nine. And the Aurora movie theater in two thousand twelve. And whereas research indicates there have been more lives lost from gunfire in America than in all the wars. In which U.S. troops have been engaged since our nation's founding. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is city council's highest responsibility. And whereas in January twenty thirteen, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade. And was tragically shot and killed just weeks later should be now celebrating her twenty-first birthday. And whereas to honor Hadiya and the hundred and ten Americans whose lives are cut short and the two hundred and thirty-plus survivors who are injured by shootings every day. A national coalition of organizations designated the first Friday in June as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. Choosing this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on the first Friday in June every year to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June third through fifth twenty twenty-two, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence. And honor the lives of the victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. And encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver. Section one. That the Council of the City and County of Denver declares the first Friday of each year, first Friday in June of each year, this year, June third twenty twenty-two. To be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June third through fifth to be Wear Orange Weekend and the entire month of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And encourages all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Section two, that the Clerk of the City and County of Denver shall attest and affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation. And a copy be transmitted to every town for gun safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman, your motion to adopt?
Yes, thank you, I move that proclamation twenty-two dash zero six two eight be adopted.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, comments by members of council, Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, I hate reading this proclamation every year, those statistics are just mind-numbing. They don't get better every year, they get worse. This Denver is is in the midst of experiencing its own epidemic of gun violence, they're ending up in younger and younger hands. It is. It's just breathtaking and and it's disappointing and. Everybody I talk to, it's one of the the main things on their mind, you know, I I always tell people, you know, when I first took office back in twenty fifteen. The phone calls were about development, 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 and now they're about crime, 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 gun violence. It's something we need to wrap our hands around, I don't sit here. I don't sit here with the answer, but I'm certainly willing and anxious to be part of the discussion. So with that, Madam President, I just ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this proclamation.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. Councilmember Sawyer?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank Councilman Cashman for bringing this proclamation forward this year. It is incredibly important. We, youth gun violence is an epidemic in our city and in our country at this point. As you know, I've been working to run a gun buyback program. We had our most recent event this past weekend at Platt Park Church. We took in another fifty-five, I believe, weapons, although several of those were BB guns, which totals a little over three hundred and sixty weapons taken in in less than ten hours over the course of this year. So it's really, really extraordinary how many weapons are out there, how many people inherit them and don't know what to do with them, don't know how to get rid of them, you know, or people, you know, experience trauma related to gun violence and don't know how to find closure. So this is really, really important. I will just say, this weekend, the mother of a young man, seventeen-year-old student at South High School who was killed several years ago, Devari Armstrong, spoke at the event, and it was extraordinary and sad. She told us that when Devari was killed, there were three friends of hers, so she and three friends got together. They were all mothers who had lost their sons to gun violence. That was two and a half years ago. There are now nineteen mothers who are a part of their support group. And that's extraordinary and sad. And so I just want to thank Councilman Cashman for bringing this forward. I want to bring attention to this issue, and I hope we will all wear orange. And just want to also let people know, our next gun buyback event will be held on June eleventh in Aurora at Heritage Christian Church, which is right next door to the theater where the Aurora mass shooting occurred. It is National Gun Buyback Day on June eleventh, so we will host the buyback from ten to one. And then we will do an event in partnership with the Broncos afterwards. It will be from four to six P.M., and the public is invited to come and join us, and I hope you all will. It will be a really, really, I think, moving event. So we're doing what we, you know, one small part of a greater community safety strategy that everyone is working on, recognizing this epidemic. And just really thank Councilmember Cashman for bringing this forward and elevating the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer. And likewise, appreciate Councilman Cashman shining a light on this and making sure that we're continuing to remember those who were lost, but making sure that we're doing everything we can to mitigate any future loss of life. Madam Secretary, roll call.
See, Tabaka?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Proclamation twenty-two dash zero six two eight has been adopted. Councilman Cashman will start that five-minute timer. If you'd like to introduce who will accept the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We should have Abby Winters from Everytown on virtual.
All right. We'll go ahead and get Abby moved over. Thanks for raising your hand, Abby. Go ahead, Abby. You can unmute.
Good evening, Council, Councilmen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, Madam President and Councilmembers. Thank you for declaring June National Gun Violence Awareness Month and the weekend of June third through the fifth, Wear Orange Weekend. As you heard, Councilman Cashman relay the statistics and remind us that this gun violence epidemic is not getting better, it's getting worse. Wear Orange is a time to renew our commitment, our opportunity to remember and mourn and lift up those impacted by gun violence. We are looking forward to joining with our community members that weekend and throughout the month of June to rededicate ourselves to this work so that mothers, as Councilwoman Sawyer expressed, mothers like Devari's don't have to share their soul-crushing stories about losing their child, so that we don't have to hear about children accessing unsecured guns and not, and not surviving. So to be very brief, thank you all for your work on this, for your continued support. And please join us the weekend of June third through the fifth for our several events around the area. We hope to see you there. Thank you again, and thank you, Councilman Cashman, for bringing the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Abby, and thank you, Councilman Cashman, for sponsoring this important proclamation as well. Madam Secretary, would you please read the bills for introduction?
From Finance and Governance, twenty-two, five, nineteen, a bill for an ordinance making an appropriation in the Capital Improvements and Capital Maintenance Fund. Twenty-two, five, twenty-seven, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed easement agreement between the City and County of Denver and Board of Water Commissioners for relocation of the Denver Water Main Line in connection with roadway improvements. From Land Use, Transportation, and Infrastructure, twenty-two, four, sixty-nine, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for eighteen ninety-five North Quebec Street and eighteen hundred North Oneida Street in South Park Hill. Twenty-two, four, seventy, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for fourteen fifty North Olive Street in Montclair. Twenty-two, four, seventy-six, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification of twenty-five, twenty-four through twenty-six, sixty, Laramore Street, twenty-six, zero, nine, twenty-six, twenty-three, twenty-six, forty-one Lawrence Street in Five Points. Twenty-two, five, twenty-six, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easements in their entirety reserved in ordinance number one-nine, seven, seven, zero, one, eight, four, series of nineteen seventy-seven, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at Book one, four, three, one, page three, forty-nine, and ordinance number two, zero, one, six, one, one, three, four, series of two thousand sixteen, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number two, zero, one, six, one, seven, one, five, nine, one, located at six, fifty, West Colfax Avenue. Twenty-two, five, thirty-two, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easement reserved in ordinance number two, zero, two, zero, zero, five, four, one, series of two thousand twenty, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number two, zero, two, zero, one, zero, seven, eight, zero, five, located at thirty-eight, fifty, Blake Street. Twenty-two, five, thirty-three, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easement in its entirety, established in section I C of the property deed recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number two, zero, one, eight, one, two, four, eight, three, one, located at eighty-eight, oh, one, East Thirty-Ninth Avenue. And from Safety, Housing, Education, and Homelessness, twenty-two, four, forty-three, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City and County of Denver and Denver Health and Hospital Authority to support the expansion of the Support Team Assisted Response Program. Twenty-two, five, fifteen, a bill for an ordinance amending an agreement with the Colorado Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing by adding nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, seventy-one dollars, forty-six cents for a new total of one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents in one year for a new end date of six, thirty, twenty twenty-two for achieving performance-based deliverables related to county administration, medical assistance eligibility, and cooperation with other medical assistance-related entities citywide.
Thank you, Council Secretary. Councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilmember Sawyer, will you make the motions for us this evening?
Yes, Council President.
All right, thank you. I'll do a recap. Under Resolutions, Councilmember Heinz has called out Resolutions five, twenty, and five, twenty-one for questions. And Councilmember Sawyer has called out Resolutions five, oh, four, and five, thirteen for votes under, or five, oh, four through five, thirteen for votes. Under Bills for Introduction, no items have been called out. Under Bills for Final Consideration, no items have been called out. Under Pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, would you please put the first item on our screens? Councilmember Heinz, please go ahead with your questions on Resolution five, twenty and five, twenty-one, if you'd like to lump them together, or it's up to you if you'd like to keep them separate.
Having them together would be great, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Honest, there will be a question. I do want to make a brief comment. I, and I apologize for my voice. I have a computer science degree. I chose to study computer science because I believe in the power of technology and how it can make our lives easier. So when I heard that Colorado was the first state in the nation to provide regulation around transportation network companies, I think Uber and Lyft, I was happy to hear that we were embracing technology and was hopeful that, excuse me, that these technology platforms would help make people's lives easier. However, I remain concerned that the gig economies embrace of technology continue to leave a group behind, specifically people with disabilities. I've been pretty open about my concerns about our micro mobility contracts and that have taken right away from people with disabilities without providing anything for people with disabilities. Scooters are regularly on the sidewalk, either abandoned in the curb ramps or careening down the sidewalk at maximum speed. I have similar concerns to the other gig industries, like short-term rental spaces and even industries with physical infrastructure, like how there are no regulations for people with disabilities concerning EV charging stations. So when I learned that Denver, specifically our airport, was considering entering into contracts with Turo and Avail, I was concerned. These are gig applications that match personal car owners with people who want to rent them for a day or so. So I reached out to each company and asked them for additional detail about their provisions for people with disabilities. I want to thank Den, by the way, for their speed with which they connected us. I'll have to admit, I am cautiously optimistic about the attention these companies have said they intend to give to this topic, i.e. ensuring everyone has access to their platform, including people with disabilities. After all, if our government is entering into a contract with the company, we should feel comfortable that our taxpayer dollars are going to contracts that serve everyone, not just those easy to serve. Both companies have made it clear that this is not the best opportunity to force accessibility into these platforms. Simply put, there's no way we can fully implement a disability-friendly platform in the short time between now and when this contract will be executed. But I'm hopeful that both companies have described a path forward to add support for everyone, including those with disabilities. So I want to ask each company a softball question. So if I could have Avail come, and basically, the only question that I have for you is, do I have your commitment that you and Avail will consider people with disabilities and make it a priority to figure out how to implement it in your platform? And will you mention your name and who you represent for the record?
I'm Nicole Dalmi, and I represent Avail. And yes, Councilmember Heinz, we are committed to making it a priority and definitely have it on our roadmap. We're a young company, so we have a lot to build, but definitely looking forward to working to get that accomplished.
Thank you. That's the only question I have for you. And is there someone from Turo here as well? I'd ask the same softball question. All right, well, thank you. And I have shared my reservations, but I believe that this, we should vote yes on both of these contracts tonight. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. And we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put Resolutions five, oh, four and five, five, oh, four through, excuse me, five, thirteen on the floor for adoption?
I move that Resolutions twenty-two dash five, oh, four, five, oh, five, five, oh, six, five, oh, seven, five, oh, eight, five, oh, nine, five, ten, five, eleven, five, twelve, and five, thirteen be adopted in a block.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. These are a series of, I believe, ten total on-call contracts coming from the Department of Parks and Rec. Thank you to you guys for the work you're doing to institute a reporting structure on the back end. Really, really appreciate it. It's not quite in place yet, so just to be consistent, going to go ahead and vote no on these, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer. Madam Secretary, roll call on Resolutions twenty-two dash zero, five, zero, four through twenty-two dash zero, five, one, three.
See, Tabaka?
No.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
One, nay, ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Resolutions twenty-two dash zero, five, zero, four through twenty-two dash zero, five, one, three have passed. That concludes the items to be called out this evening. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Councilmembers, remember, this is a consent or block vote, and you will need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Hang on, I gotta pull up my screen here. Twenty-two dash zero, five, seven, nine, zero, four, nine, seven, zero, five, two, zero, zero, five, two, one, zero, five, two, two, zero, five, one, four, zero, five, one, six, zero, five, two, five, zero, five, two, nine, zero, five, three, one, zero, five, three, four, zero, five, three, five, zero, five, three, seven, zero, six, two, four, zero, four, zero, 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 four, nine, eight, zero, four, nine, nine, zero, five, zero, 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 five, zero, one, zero, five, zero, two, zero, five, zero, three, zero, five, one, seven, zero, five, two, three. We've got a whole list here. Zero, five, two, four, zero, four, six, seven, zero, four, six, eight, zero, four, seven, two, zero, four, seven, three, zero, four, seven, four, zero, four, eight, four, and that'll do it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer. And it's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call.
See, Tabaka?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. The resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Our pre-recess announcement, tonight there will be a required public hearing on Council Bill twenty-two dash zero, three, four, two, changing the zoning classification for one, two, eight, six, South Gilpin Street in Washington Park. A required public hearing- Park, a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0354, changing the zoning classification for 2640 North Grape Street in North Park Hill, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0355, changing the zoning classification for 480 South Teehone Street in Athmar Park. Anyone wishing to speak on any of these matters must go online to sign up to speak during the recess of council. Sign up opened online at 4:30 p.m. If you've already signed up to speak, please do not sign up again as we've already received your submission. If you are not already signed up to speak, sign up re-